Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of March 24th to order. And, Roberta, would you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisors Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foye.
Here.
And Supervisor Bennett.
Here. Thank you very much. And for a moment of affirmation this morning, we have Dr. Chris Young. Some of you know Dr. Young, but he's been focused on people's health, I think, just about his whole life. And he's, to give you an idea, he's very involved in the Locavore movement here in Ventura County to try to consume as much food as that he can from local sources. And he's been an inspiration for me many times. And I think he's certainly very appropriate for us to give us some words of inspiration as we start our day here today. So, Chris, would you come on up, please?
Thank you very much. Well, good morning, CEO Robinson and supervisors. I certainly appreciate this opportunity to offer this morning's moment of affirmation. I hope that you're prepared for good news, because I didn't bring anything else. Yeah, I know. I planned that. What's not news is that residents of our county and of our nation are not healthy. It's also not news that healthcare is unaffordable to many, if not most, and certainly that with our current system, healthcare costs will ultimately bankrupt us if something else doesn't do it first. So, again, not news, just, we all know that.
I thought this was going to be good news.
See, that's it. That's not news. That's just old hat. We all know that. We all know where we're at. Now, we get to the news and the good news part. And that is that I am here this morning to affirm that we can become healthier while reducing costs. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to quickly read you an abbreviated version of an opinion piece entitled "Alternative Medicine Is Mainstream." This was published in the Wall Street Journal on January 9th of this year, and it was written by three of the most well-known medical doctors in our country: Deepak Chopra, Dean Ornish, and Andrew Weil, and was also authored by a doctor that I had not heard of before, had to do a little research. His name is Rustam Roy. He's a professor of geochemistry and a renowned healthcare reform advocate. So, here's what it says. Remember the timing? This was written in January, so a little bit of this is from behind us here. So, it says, "In mid-January, the Institute of Medicine of the National Academy of Sciences and the Brave Well Collaborative are convening a summit on integrative medicine and the health of the public. This is a watershed in the evolution of integrative medicine, a holistic approach to healthcare that uses the best of conventional and alternative therapies such as meditation, yoga, acupuncture, and herbal remedies. Many of these therapies are now scientifically documented to not only be medically effective, but also cost-effective. If we want to make affordable healthcare available to the 45 million Americans who do not have health insurance, then we need to address the fundamental causes of health and illness and provide incentives for healthy ways of living rather than reimbursing only drugs and surgery. Heart disease, diabetes, prostate cancer, breast cancer, and obesity account for 75% of the healthcare costs, and yet these are largely preventable and even reversible by changing diet and lifestyle. Many people tend to think of breakthroughs in medicine as a new drug, laser, or high-tech surgical procedure. They often have a hard time believing that the simple choices that we make in our lifestyle, what we eat, how we respond to stress, whether or not we smoke cigarettes, how much exercise we get, and the quality of our relationships and social support can be as powerful as drugs and surgery, but they often are, and in many instances, they are even more powerful. Integrative medicine approaches such as plant-based diets, yoga, meditation, and psychosocial support may stop or even reverse the progression of coronary heart disease, diabetes, hypertension, prostate cancer, obesity, hypercholesterolemia, and other chronic conditions. Our healthcare system is primarily a disease care system. Last year, 2.1 trillion was spent in the U.S. on medical care, or 16.5% of the gross national product. Of these trillions, 95 cents of every dollar was spent to treat disease after it had already occurred. At least 75% of these costs were spent on treating chronic diseases such as heart disease and diabetes that are preventable or even reversible. The choices are especially clear in cardiology. In 2006, for example, according to data provided by the American Heart Association, 1.3 million coronary angioplasty procedures were performed at an average cost of $48,399 each, or more than $60 billion. And 448,000 coronary bypass operations were performed at a cost of $99,743 each, or more than $44 billion. In other words, Americans spent more than $100 billion in 2006 for these two procedures alone. Despite these costs, a randomized controlled trial published in April of 2007 in the New England Journal of Medicine found that angioplasties and stents do not prolong life or even prevent heart attacks in stable patients. Coronary bypass surgery prolongs life in less than 3% of patients who receive it. So, Medicare and other insurers and individuals pay billions for surgical procedures like angioplasty and bypass surgery that are usually dangerous, invasive, expensive, and largely ineffective. Yet, they pay very little, if any money at all, for integrative medicine approaches that have been proven to reverse and/or prevent most chronic diseases that account for 75% of our healthcare costs. That bears repeating. The disease that accounts for more premature deaths and costs Americans more than any other illness is almost completely preventable simply by changing diet and lifestyle. And the same lifestyle changes that can prevent or even reverse heart disease also help prevent or reverse many other chronic diseases as well. Integrative medicine approaches emphasize both personal responsibility and the opportunity to make affordable, quality healthcare available to those who most need it. In closing, I affirm that we can have our cake and eat it too. We can become healthier while being financially solvent. Thank you.
Yeah. Supervisor Parks just said carrot cake, right? Locally grown carrots. Chris, thank you for taking the time. And certainly, healthcare is a big issue for us on the Board of Supervisors, so we really appreciate you reminding us and pointing out this aspect of healthcare for us here in Ventura County. And with that, we're now ready for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Supervisor Parks, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end to its resolve.
We are ready for a motion on our minutes. It's been moved. Do we have a second? Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote, please. And that has been passed with one abstention on the minutes from Supervisor Zaragoza. We are now ready for our consent calendar. I'm sorry. We're ready for our agenda review.
Yes, Chair Bennett. Time certain, item 34. The materials were provided on Friday, March 20th. And there's an addendum, agenda item, that has been posted and provided to your board, and it's under Policy Matters, a recommendation of Supervisor Bennett to adopt a resolution recognizing the Ventura County Arts Council as official designated agency to execute the 209 through 2011 state local partnership program grant contracts with California Arts Council.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? Does anybody have anything? I'd just like to make some comments about item 13 before we do the consent calendar, but I won't poll it. I'll just make a comment right before we vote on that. And with that, I'd like to adopt the agenda as modified.
Close it down.
It's a motion and second. We're ready to vote. And that agenda has been adopted. We're now at our consent agenda items 10 through 18.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to poll item 12 for discussion.
Okay.
And I also just have a question regarding item, sorry, item 16.
All right. If you want to go ahead and have the discussion right now, then we'll do the consent calendar.
Sure. So, Mr. Powers is here. On item 12, this report on dental utilization of healthcare coverage, I just, I thought that this was an important report because it does set a baseline for what we're doing in the ACE program. We've done this, there's a couple of chapters, something we've talked, I think, for a couple of years, we've talked about coverage for children, particularly that what a gap we have is dental coverage. So, I might question, and would like to hear from you, because we should operate more than, I mean, the leverage was very good, but to talk about, do we anticipate our ability to provide further dental coverage and what are we seeing in the great need of that?
Good morning, Chair Bennett. Board members, Supervisor Robinson.
Mike, I'm sorry. My mic wasn't down all that time, but you heard.
I did, you remember. Of course. I'd like to introduce Sadie Pupa, who's one of our outstanding fiscal managers. She oversees the healthcare plan as well as the ACE program, so you can touch on those issues and...
Thank you.
Morning. Second Officer Robinson's supervisor.
Could you do me a favor? Just pull those two microphones a little closer together. That's, that's just a little more rational.
Thank you. With regard to your question, I think we do have the capacity to offer the services. We've experienced high utilization. The members that have been seen have had an average of two visits per individual. It appears the data is showing that their care is being managed and that they're having the teeth extracted, the cleanings, the fillings provided.
Okay. I know Clinicus is our partner in this, and they have, for years, been providing dental coverage, probably one of the very few in the county for our underserved and uninsured. It's just, again, I think we've had various discussions over the years, that it's such a critical piece of healthcare.
Yes.
For children to have healthy teeth and healthy dental care and teach them the basics to be proactive in learning how to take care of their healthcare. So, I would hope anything we can do, and the education component is just as important as certainly the treatment side of it, so.
Yes. And in reviewing the data, there were several instances where they were teaching the individuals how to have proper hygiene and maintain their teeth.
Okay. That was it.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Can I add a little bit to that? Isn't Clinicus also using a mobile unit to go from location to location? I know in Oxnard, they had one, and there was probably a line of maybe 50, 100 people in line just to use the mobile unit, so is that...
Yes. Good point. Thank you. In the clinic areas where they do not offer dentistry, they do have, I believe, two mobile units that visit those sites to better accommodate the needs. And that's working out very well.
I want to commend you and Clinicus for outstanding program, too.
Thank you.
And it was supported by the Dental Society, and First Five put monies into that mobile unit, too.
Absolutely. First Five is very critical to that, too.
Thank you. I just, I thought this was important enough to have a good public discussion on it.
Supervisor Foye, I'd like to jump in.
A question maybe for both of you. I appreciate what you're doing and going after to make this work. It comes from the healthcare insurance side, realizing people don't have good teeth, it really runs into the medical side later. One of the things I've noticed here, though, is we spent about $181,000, $182,000 in the last quarter. But we're maxed at $1 million for the year. Are we going to be able to, how, what do we do if we get over that? Are we going to, we're going to be able to manage that and work through that?
Well, we manage it the best we can. We do have, both the health care agency and Clinicus have self-pay discount programs that are very simply discounted based on income and family size. So, absolutely, we encourage continued access.
Yeah.
Whether or not they qualify for the ACE program.
Okay. Yeah. I know we only got that $1 million, but I do know it helps long-term in healthcare.
Absolutely. Yeah. Good. Thanks.
And that, I would like to point out, I really appreciate the comments, and I certainly echo those. Being on the First Five Commission, we've really been trying to find some solution to this dental problem for children. Just finding dentists that are willing to do the work has been a real challenge, and I think we really want to compliment those dentists that have been willing to step forward and provide this care in this situation. But Supervisor Foye's question in particular, the reason we have this report here is we asked, we said, "We want to make sure that it's actually being utilized," because our problem before was, we had the funding, and there was a bottleneck, and they were not actually, Clinicus, there was a connection, there was a problem in terms of, we weren't actually providing much dental care. So, your concern is we're going to run out of money. We have this report because we were concerned, we didn't want to have money sitting in the bank at the end of the year and have kids having not gotten it. So, I'm happy to see this report. I'm happy to see that everything's been worked out and we're right on track. This feels to me like we're right on track. Would that be your perception?
Yes, I agree. Yes, definitely.
We're just right where we wanted to be in terms of numbers of children served and funds expended, et cetera. Mr. Powers, you look like you have something you want to add.
One thing to add, just in terms of all of our county clinics for all the children, also, we have a sealant program to help.
What program?
Sealant program, actually, with fluoride sealant, so that the children's teeth help prevent cavities, and so we do that throughout our clinic system.
So, all the clinics are doing the sealing thing?
Yes.
Wow. Great.
Now, this program is adult enrollees.
That's right.
But the importance of this is that, you know, their parents, they go there.
Exactly.
If they can get this kind of care, they can help to teach their children, bring their children up with the same kind of appreciation for the care that's needed to take care of their dental health, so.
Great.
But I appreciate it.
Okay.
Good work.
I would just, I imagine that Clinicus is pretty much West County. In the East County, we do have the Westminster Clinic, I know, out in my district, which helps provide free dental care to people who don't have insurance or can't afford it. And it's true, it's hard to get dentists to volunteer for that, but one nice thing that they also do is they incorporate the youth in training them for dental and medical careers. So, I don't know if Clinicus does that, but it's just a nice addition to the program so we can get more of those health professionals out there.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on this item? Okay. Since we're talking about these consent items before we get to the consent calendar, I just wanted to point out on item 13, just to make the comment, you know, we've got, you know, we're talking about our 10-year plan, the homelessness, et cetera. Fundamental issue is actually building units, and that's exactly what's happening. You know, 25-unit apartment complex to provide shelter for Mental Health Service Act targeted adults. And those are the adults that are most at risk of becoming homeless. And so, I really want to compliment Melanie and our staff there, Carolyn Briggs, I know should be out in the audience someplace. There we are. For pushing this and for all the cooperation with Oxnard, Supervisors Zaragoza's district, et cetera, for this 25-unit apartment complex going forward. So, thank you very much. I don't have any questions on it. I just wanted to call it out. It's on the consent calendar, but it's a very important consent calendar item. Didn't want to imply that being on the consent calendar wasn't a big deal. This should be a real celebration every time.
Absolutely.
We can get moving on more actual units, and particularly for mentally, for targeted adults for, from a mental health standpoint. So, with that, we're ready for a motion on the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I just have one other question on 16, and really just a question to the supervisor. We had quite a discussion when we heard this originally, and on the 10th, and the board letter that's before us is the same one that was before us on the 10th, and I just, he wanted more time to do a meeting, and I think we talked about issues related to commercial versus single-family, and how we could, you know, look at the challenge that we're facing in our water districts. And I just, with this back before us on consent, I just assume then your questions were answered in the best can be.
Yeah. I had a meeting with Reddy and Jeff Pratt, and we went through, spent about an hour together going through a lot of it. It still was, I'm still, you know, a little concerned about that high rate, because this rate is almost double of what it was the last year before and the year before, but it's not them doing that rate. This is based on a construction industry standard and trying to figure out why. Two years, last two years, only been 3.5%, I think, is what it was. Now, we're at 6.8, when everything's slowed down, cost or less. They take a very clear understanding from a, you know, book that comes out that gives construction industry. I think it's a good method that they're using in going back forward and what we're doing. So, I'm convinced that they're doing a good job of what they're doing. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion last time and bringing this back.
Well, it's helpful for us to understand that, too. So, we feel that, and always, the staff does good work, but makes, we check that, you know, we're doing everything we can to, these are tough times. So, that was, that was it.
Okay. We're ready for a motion on the consent calendar?
Move consent, second. Second.
Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And the consent calendar passes. Do we have any public comment cards? And the room empties.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll ask us a question. Do we have any consent, I mean, any public comment cards? Great. Cliff Williams?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors, CEO Robinson. My name is Cliff Williams, and I'm the commander of the CHP Moore Park area. And on a statewide basis, the CHP developed a strategic plan for this year, and part of that strategic plan is for commanders to come before the Board of Supervisors. So, myself and Commander Joe Whiteford over here are here to just give you a brief presentation about the CHP, and you can expect us to visit once each quarter. And if you talk to your colleagues around the state, the CHP commanders will be visiting there also. I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about the Moore Park CHP office. I was surprised the other day in my office when one of my clerical staff told me that somebody at the Ventura County Courts wasn't aware that there was a Moore Park CHP office. Well, as most of you know, on January 1st, 2005, we started a new CHP office in Ventura County. And my borderline goes from roughly Somus, if you draw a line from there to the 101 freeway, and you draw a line straight up to the eastern city limits of Fillmore. We cover the Highway 126 to the LA County line, the 118 freeway to the LA County line, the 23 freeway, the 101 freeway from the bottom of the Cano grade all the way to the LA County line, numerous county roads, and 10 unincorporated communities, primarily in Supervisor Foye's and Parks' area. So, we've been busy at work since 2005, and I'm very proud to say that due to the hard work of the CHP officers in Moore Park, we have seen a steady decrease in the number of fatalities within the CHP jurisdiction. During our first year, we had 16. In 2006, we went down by one to 15. And then in 2007, we dropped to 12. And then last year, we were at 11. This year, our goal is to break 10, and that's the name of our program, Break 10 in '09. And I'm happy to report that thus far for this new year, we've only had one traffic fatality, so we're on track. And I know my officers sometimes say whenever I talk about that to knock on wood, so fortunately, this looks like real wood. So, I hope to report the continuing good news throughout the rest of the year. Some of the things that we're doing to help us break 10 in '09, we started a tracking board where we have a map of eastern Ventura County, and we're plotting all the locations that the fatal accidents have been occurring so we can start putting our people in those places where the fatal accidents are happening. We've also been fortunate to get some Office of Traffic Safety grant overtime, and they're for different causes, so we're strategically deploying those overtime officers into places where we need. For instance, we have some roving DUI overtime, and we're beefing up our staff on the weekends, primarily when the drinking and driving occur, so we have more officers out on the road. Also during the summer, we've had a problem on Port trail Road in our jurisdiction with racing motorcyclists, so we're going to be staffing officers out there. And one other thing we're going to do this summer is have another sobriety checkpoint. Last summer, last year, we arrested eight individuals at our checkpoint, so we do have a DUI problem in eastern Ventura County. I am also participating, as well as a Ventura CHP representative, at the County Safe Bars ID Task Force. So, we're hoping to, our goal isn't to just go out there and arrest and write as many tickets as we can, but we want to reach out to the public, in particular, our young people, and do what we can to act proactively and get information out to prevent the occurrence of DUI. I'm going to give you just a brief rundown on our collision statistics and some of our enforcement efforts. Thus far, for the current year, we've recorded, and I should mention, this is through the end of February. I don't have the March statistics yet, but through the end of February, we've recorded 253 total traffic collisions that our officers have documented, and that's down 4.2% from this time last year. Property damage-only collisions are down by 8.3% at 176. Our injury crashes are currently at 77, which is an uptick of 8.5% from last year. I already told you about our good fatal crash progress. My DUI-caused collisions are up by 25% compared to last year, but I should mention, the numbers was 20 last year, 25 for this year, but yet the trend is still up. My officers have been working hard to reduce all accidents, and as a result, they've written, you know, since, or through the first two months of the year, 5,700... nine citations, which is up sixty-five percent from last year. And I think that in part has something to do with why our collision, our fatal collision rate has been dropping. The officers have arrested one hundred and forty-one DUIs, which is just about identical to where it was last year. So the officers are working hard. In addition to that, they have provided one thousand four hundred and twenty-three motorist services through the first two months of the year. So I hope you can appreciate the fact that my officers are out there working hard, representing everybody in Ventura County, and trying to make our local highways a safer place. I thank you very much for your attention into, I don't know if you want to ask any questions?
Yeah, I do. I want to say that I really appreciate Cliff's dedication. I know we started Task Force a couple of years ago, and Cliff has been on that, and he's just, and his staff, and done a tremendous job in really training around the 118, and I know Supervisor Long has been involved with that, too. And it's just been a, you know, a real blessing to the people. I mean, some of the statistics he hasn't talked about is that a lot of the unsafe trucks they've taken off because they've opened up their scales, and matter of fact, they got money to put some barriers so the guys can feel more safe, and they don't mind watching those, you know, doing those trucks, and the accidents and everything else. And so I know the people of Moore Park and the whole community is very happy, but I know it wouldn't happen without your leadership, so I want to say thank you very much for all your help.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor. Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, I also want to thank you. I'm glad to have you here, and I'm glad you're going to do this quarterly, and we have CHP presidents come to our MAC meetings, and we've got two MACs, so that keeps them busy at least two nights out of the month. Also want to thank you, I know with the implementation of the synchronized traffic signals on Santa Rosa Road, the CHP played a big part in that, in helping to patrol the area, and we have, and again, knock on wood, been accident-free, which is wonderful, and hopefully that will continue. I know you have also assisted us in Oak Park with school traffic, it's always been a big concern, I think it probably is in a lot of our districts, that we have some schools in the unincorporated area there, and we're looking at having a school safety traffic fair out in May, and hopefully your office will be able to attend. Just looking at the different issues also, we have the 23 and the 101 interchange, which is a bit of a bottleneck, and I know that keeps you all busy, too, as well as trying to keep it accident-free. And I'm really glad to see the step up in the DUI checkpoints. We have, we had a statistic here, I think at the last board meeting, somewhere around up to eighty-five incidents of driving drunk occur with drunk drivers before they're caught sometimes, so being able to get them off the road is so important. And then I know we also have, it's nice to get the accident injury rate down. I know we've had a house out in Casa Cano in the Newberry Park area, and it's been there for decades, and it has been crashed into three times this year. Fortunately, it's only been property damage, but you have these incidents where we just really rely on the CHP, and I know Nazir and I are going to go out there and talk with the owner, too, but that's just a really unfortunate situation, but just really want to say thank you for your office, because you really do go above and beyond. I don't think people realize how much the CHP does, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I might just also, thank you. Appreciate that you're going to do this, I think it's very helpful to do it, for the public to know the good work you do. And my question to you is, you do all of this with how much, how many deployment officers?
I have a total of thirty-nine CHP officers and three sergeants who are assigned to the Moore Park area. I have a few officers that stay inside, because we provide a regular amount of public service Monday through Friday, such as VIN checks, vehicle identification number checks, in conjunction with DMV automobile certification. We have an accident review officer, we do a variety of different public functions, including manning the front desk, answering public concerns. I can go on and on, but I don't have enough time.
And twenty-four-seven shifts coverage?
Yes, yes. And I have two officers who are assigned full-time to patrol the unincorporated areas. And as I mentioned before, we have ten areas, and two of which are highly populated, one in Oak Park and one in Santa Rosa Valley, and we get a number of phone calls and demands for service, so. So we're a busy office, but I think we like it that way. I'm also happy that most of my officers are residents of eastern Ventura County, they care about their communities. I myself, I have four children who are drivers, and I want to make sure that the highways are as safe as possible for my kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I know in western county, we are particularly concerned and interested in the Safe Bar program that you're going, and you mentioned that you're going there with the western Ventura County advocates, and to the extent that we can coordinate and do a great job with that, it would be very helpful.
Thank you. You know, with the help of Ventura County Behavioral Health, they have recorded the top seventeen bars that put out the most DUIs in Ventura County, and we attempt to positively interact with those bars and try to change that trend, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Captain Joe Whiteford from the Ventura CHP office, and he has some information to share, thank you.
Go ahead, Captain.
CEO Robinson, Chairman of the Board of Members, good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Again, I'm Captain Joe Whiteford, Commander of the Ventura CHP Office, I've been in the area for about two years now. I actually broke in as a new rookie in nineteen ninety, in Ventura, worked a couple of years, and then transferred out and came back. Just want to give a quick snapshot of what's going on in our area. I have a complement of fifty-nine officers, seven sergeants, fourteen dispatchers, and eight support personnel. Our, I just want to say that our fatal injury and property damage collisions were down across the board in two thousand and eight versus two thousand and seven, which is good news. You know, our main mission is to save lives, we're trying, but we know we have our work cut out for us. Again, all of this good news, there's three things I want to talk about real quick, illegal street racing, motorcycle fatalities, and our young drivers. You may have heard, we're investigating a double fatal collision happened on Edding Road at Wood Road two nights ago. It was a solo vehicle collision, we don't think it was racing, but the car was probably doing over a hundred miles per hour. Driver was nineteen, right front passenger, twenty-one, both were killed. The person in the backseat was seat-belted, he made the call, he was seriously injured, but he was able to get on his cellphone and indirect help into his area, into the scene of the collision. Again, the car used was a nineteen ninety-two Acura Integra, popular for racing, it's one of those that has the type of motor they like to soup up and street race with. We know that part of the county has a problem with street racing, so what I did was I trained, I had twenty-five officers trained with regard to street racing issues. I secured an overtime grant to work out there, so we're in the planning stages now, and I'm hoping to work with Camero PD to address that issue out there. I know it's been ongoing for years. On another note, we've experienced a high number of motorcycle fatalities in Ojai area. Our West Valley CHP office in Agura, they did such a good job chasing the motorcycles out of Mulholland, I think they all came out to Ojai. I visited a few of these fatal scenes, the riders were not from here, so I don't think they're well-versed in Highway thirty-three, the nooks and crannies where people pull in and pull out. So I was able to secure another overtime grant, starting May through August, I'll have additional units working in the Ojai area, and possibly get our aircraft out there, too. It's easier to spot with, we got a lot of them passing over double yellow lines, just driving way too fast. I had a couple come around the corner, and I thought they were going to hit, run into my patrol car, they're just coming, we call them knee-dragging, they come down high-speed through the turns, and it's causing a lot of concern for the locals up there, too, so we're going to try to address that. And with regard to young people, you know, traffic collisions are the leading cause of death for people ages fifteen through twenty. Although they make up four percent of our driving population, they're at fault in sixty-six percent of the fatal collisions they're involved in, so there's a disconnect there. And, but we're doing the in Ventura, we have our Start Smart program, saying that young drivers fifteen to nineteen, their parents are encouraged to attend, we actually try to get them there with their children. You know, it started out slow, we may have eight to ten people class every other month with recent fatalities in the area involving young drivers, we get sixty-plus people, sometimes we have to turn people away. It's monthly now. Officer Tony Pettifery, who was seriously injured, now paralyzed, was up on the Rincon, you guys may remember that. He comes and speaks at this about choices you make in, you know, your life now, at this young age, can come back to haunt you in the future, and he draws a pretty good crowd. The last program I want to talk about is CALGRIP, it stands for the California Gang Reduction Intervention and Prevention Program. Basically Arnold Schwarzenegger, going to town hall meetings, started to hear about all the gang problems around the state, and that people asked, what are you going to do to help? The local resources were overwhelmed, so the governor was able to get federal funding, and what this does is puts extra CHP officers on the road on overtime to saturate the gang problems. We've worked with the local agencies, right now, we've, you know, we've been invited into Oakland, Richmond, Salinas, and I think there are ten other cities around the state that we've been asked to come in to help. Right now, we're working alongside with Ventura PD, Oxnard PD, and Ventura County Sheriff's Office, and we've been making strides in these communities, just in two thousand and eight alone, Ventura CHP and the gang areas made seventeen hundred traffic stops, made eighty DUI arrests, had forty-seven other in custody for various felony weapons and drug charges, issued over a thousand citations, confiscated nine weapons, made nearly five hundred Aladain assists, and impounded one hundred and sixty vehicles. And the thought process behind that is if you take the vehicle away, if you find a reason to impound it from a suspected gang member, they're less likely to commit crimes, same with auto theft suspects, because they can't get away on foot, they'd rather drive, so. Anyways, there are a lot of other things I'd like to talk about, I know I'm short on time, so with that, I just open it to any questions.
Great. Supervisor Zergosa?
You know, I want to thank you for that report, it's an excellent report. We also have, you know, the El Rio MAC, and Captain Webb reports to the El Rio MAC, excuse me, and is doing an excellent job, especially patrolling central over by Real Mesa High School for the speeding of the kids, and protecting the children there, and also Vineyard and Rose Road, and he also reports to the MAC every time we have a meeting there, and is doing an excellent job for us. So I want to thank the Highway Patrol for.
Well, thank you very much. I'll pass it on to Officer Webb, and if I could share real quick something we did in El Rio, I'm going to court on it, I was actually working out that day, I got court on it next month. One of my sergeants is working in El Rio, hears, he keeps the windows rolled down, hears, please don't kill me, looks overseas, a man pointing a rifle at a guy on a bicycle, my officer, sergeant starts to drive over, guy jumps in the car with the gun, takes off, throws the gun out the window, we ended up arresting the guy, but I confiscated a weapon, had a bullet in the chamber, this guy is wanted for numerous, he was going to kill this guy, right there, and we stopped, so I've had people, that night, I've had a lot of citizens from El Rio come out and thank us for being out there, saying they felt much safer, but whatever you need, we're here for you.
The partnership that we have with Oxnard PD, the Captain Aranda with the Deputy Sheriff's and Captain Webb is just excellent, so I just want to share that with you.
Well, thank you, I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Supervisor Foye?
Yes, Captain, I do appreciate you coming, you and Cliff coming, because it just goes to show, most of us think of the Highway Patrol as you're driving down, and somebody's going to slow down, they're going to give you a ticket, whatever. But I realize, as I know myself, being involved in this position for the last few years, what we see is that you're involved in all aspects of what goes on in this county, and your real support for other law enforcement agencies, and like you're there saving people's lives besides just in traffic situations. So I've seen it in the disasters, you work with the Sheriff's and Fire and everybody else, and it's just, it's just great you've come here to, and I just want to say thank you for what you both do in your, for this county, and what the Highway Patrol does for us, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that very much, sir.
Supervisor Long?
Yeah.
And representing Ojai, I really appreciate the issue, we've had people contacting us about the motorcyclists, and they, you know, they're putting everybody at risk, not just themselves, but certainly we are losing motorcycles like crazy up there and stuff, so that's certainly a big one. And I mentioned already about the Safe Bars, if there's something that's really affecting our young people, I think it's that, you know, that party scene in Ventura, and then driving to all kinds of places in western Ventura County, then after that, so any help that my office can give, we'd certainly want to invite you to let us know if there's anything we can do in terms of trying to make sure that we get those bars under control.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Captain, would you please repeat the information you gave on youth and accidents?
Leading cause of death for people ages fifteen to twenty, or traffic collisions, and, sorry, I have the numbers down here.
Fifty-six percent?
Yeah, the fifteen to twenty age group makes up four percent of the driving population, but are at fault for sixty-six percent of the fatality crashes that they're involved in.
I wanted you to repeat that, because I think many of us certainly know families who have had those kinds of losses, and it's a real tragedy. And when you start to give a child the keys to a car, I don't know a parent who isn't nervous, you know, regardless of sort of how responsible they seem generally, so it's a high-risk arena. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you both very much, it's very informative, and we'll be happy if you want to do it again, to actually agendize it so that you don't have this, we can still do it early, but we could agendize this if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I might point out to our board members, normally we have a Williams during our public comment that's not quite so sober as the Cliff Williams we had here today, right? So with that, do we have any other public? What's that? We don't? Okay, great. All right, we are ready to move on, it's nine fifteen, let's see if we can take care of our staff by knocking out all of those items that are not time-certain. Oh, yes, board comments, thank you very much, we'll let you start Supervisor Long.
Yes, and thank you. That was very good, and I think it would be good to agendize it so that County Council doesn't look at us like, wait a minute, wait a minute. But that's a good report to have in the future. A couple of things, one, I'd like to, I'd like to publicly thank Kay Wilson-Bolton. Kay Wilson-Bolton is a very active member of the Santa Paula community, she is a past mayor of the Santa Paula City Council, but what she's doing these days, and has been for the last year or more, is really addressing the needs of the homeless in Santa Paula. And she has opened up a program one day a week to, when she's got great volunteers, and she, to feed the homeless, and her members have, just in the last six weeks, gone from twenty who walk through the door to seventy-five who walk through the door. And she does this with, with just collecting dollars from whoever can contribute to it. And I think she's just done a tremendous job, and the clergy association in Santa Paula is very engaged with her, and I wanted to thank her, and another hat she recently put on was the fire, the home that burned in Santa Paula where there were seven people, adults and children, and they were, and the Red Cross responded tremendously, but over the long term, these folks were without shelter and had lost everything, all of their belongings. And so she put, she started to drive to collect clothing for the children and the adults, and food, and other things, and I just wanted to thank her for that. She really just took that on as one person to reach out and help people in need, does an excellent job in that community.
Well, just while you're pausing, I just want to point out, I have seen her all over the place, in Ojai doing the same thing, I just want to pass that on to you. Remarkable woman.
She really is, she really is. Okay, I have a list to adjourn in memory of, and just to make one last comment, attended the Association Water Agency's Installation Breakfast last week, where they did install their new officers, of which our very own Supervisor is now on the Board of Directors, Mr. Zergosa. But the program was a report from Steve Bachman, who is, Dr. Steve Bachman from United Water, and he talked generally about the issue of water shortage and demands, and seawater intrusion, and it was very sobering as to what we're looking at in our county with, again, threats of seawater intrusion, concerns with the drought conditions, not refilling, restocking our watersheds, and the issues related to rising costs that go along with all of that. So they do an excellent job, I think, in bringing to our, to the public and to all of the water purveyors, a sobering message of what we're confronted with. of the water purveyors, a sobering message of what we're confronted with, with water here in our county. So I know Mr. Zergosa was there too. So that's the last of my comments.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Zergosa.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I want to adjourn also in memory of my folks in this list. And I had a pretty busy week. And I met over in South Oxnard with the Oxnard Revitalization Group on Wednesday evening and spoke to them about the county issues and also about the county budget. You know, when you talk about $1.6 billion and the board ends up with $68 or $47 million, they just could not understand how we can go from $1.6 to discretionary dollars down to the small amount. But they enjoyed it too. Also was over at the Little League opening day, El Rio Little League opening day on Saturday. And the Highway Patrol, I forgot to mention too, that they also helped there with the traffic on Rose Road because the kids were crossing across Rose Road going over to Real Devine School. We had probably maybe 700 people there for opening day for El Rio Little League. And the kids were having lots of fun and moms and dads and grandparents. We had burritos and hot dogs and so forth. Also, I went over to Sunset Little League and over on Durley Park for the same thing there. And I probably ate about maybe four or five burritos that whole Saturday. Had a great time. We all attended the Latino Leadership Award, El Consejo had this past Saturday. And Supervisor Long was there too. This Saturday was very inspiring. A lot of outstanding individuals that provided years and years of community service to Oxnard and Ventura County. So that was really great. Also, we had the El Rio MAC Advisory Council Meeting. We had the first time that we had a lot of concerns about Spanish speaking, but the first time we had Spanish speaking, both English and Spanish at the El Rio MAC. And I want to commend Lourdes Celarizano from my staff that did an excellent job in translating there for the individuals. Also Britt was here and discussed parking restrictions, traffic signals, and many other issues, and he did an excellent job. Very knowledgeable man, Britt, you know, so. And again, you know, he's got a lot of credibility there at the MAC, and I want to commend him for doing a great job. Also in addition, on April the 4th, it's going to be Earth Day in Oxnard. This started way back in 1992 when I used to work for the city and I started that program many, many years ago. And it's now probably one of Oxnard's finest birthday programs. They're at Plaza Park and it's going to be a very, very successful event. And also was there at AWA and got installed as the new director for AWA. A very exciting week.
Great. Back to Supervisor Long.
Thank you. I forgot one. This is a fun thing and I'll send down for all the board members and any in the public. Wanted to announce that this weekend is the Rail Fest 2009, Santa Clara Valley Railroad Historical Society Rail Fest. Free admission and great fun things to do, train rides, food and craft vendors, and it really is just a fun weekend in the Santa Clara Valley. Starts in Fillmore, but the train goes obviously through the valley. And if you're a rail buff or a train buff, or if you're not and just have some little ones who'd like to take a train ride, take them out this weekend to the Rail Fest in Santa Clara. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. We had quite a few things going on in my district. We had three meetings of the Triomfa Sanitation District, Friday, Saturday, and Monday. And when you think about it, I think you get about 200 a meeting, not the board member, the board supervisors don't get stipends, but thinking about that and VCTC and LAFCO and SCAG, and I'm bringing in some money into our general fund here. I don't even know how much. And I encourage us all to make sure that our stipends go to the general fund if we need them. Also had our MAC meetings and interest in Santa Rosa Valley is the opening of the first phase of the Santa Rosa Park. We're having a grand opening Saturday, and I know the board's all invited at noon. And we have two different bands that want to play, so and I was just thinking we'd be doing CDs. So it sounds like a good time. I know the whole community will be out. Speaking of Triomfa Sanitation District, one of the things we've been working on is looking at rate adjustments because as we know, the water rates keep going up. And right now, we've been told that Metropolitan is looking at raising the cost for water to us 30% in the next two years. So that's a significant increase and something that has to get passed down to customers. But that's a lot, particularly in these times. Also, we had a wonderful workshop and Saturday in Oak Park. We had Owen Dell talk about how to change over our thirsty lawns to a more sustainable, drought-tolerant landscaping. And there were at least 100 people at that. So there's a lot of interest out there, and I'm hoping we'll be able to encourage that because to me, that's a permanent solution. And that concludes my comments.
Supervisor Floyd. Good, thank you. I want to adjourn in memory of people on this list and call out one, Ray Navarro. Ray was the husband of Patricia Navarro, was appointed by the HIV AIDS Baserit Committee. And Ray and Patricia have been married for 46 years and moved to Simi Valley in 1968. They've owned businesses during that time. Ray especially loved spending time out in Channel Islands out at the harbor on his boat, the Sun Ray. So he'll be missed by his family and our community. Also, another thing is, I don't know, it must be in the water in Moore Park. But Moore Park forensic team won the debate, you know, the state debate. And again, I say it's in the water because a lot of these kids, the kid who won four gold medals, Justin Harris, 24 years old, he comes out of Thousand Oaks, matter of fact. And so, but it's just great to see some great stuff going on in the county with that kind of stuff. So it's wonderful. And also just say congratulations to Commander Dave Tennyson. He was appointed as the chief deputy. So it's great, his 30 years of service, and we'll continue to see him do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry to say there are two former county employees that have passed away. I'd like to recognize Annie Carney, was retired from the Ventura County Medical Center where she was a central supply supervisor, and James Franklin Sapp, worked for the County Ventura and Administrative Services Supervisor for Public Works for 15 years. We lost both of them over this past week and like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of them and the other people on this list. The only other thing I would wanted to mention in my comments this morning is that interesting times economically, seeing sort of the stock market's reaction, and it actually started more than a week ago. I told Ms. Robinson, write it down, this is the bottom, and she wrote it down, right? 6,400?
Three to nine, you said that.
That's right. That's March 9th. I said that was the bottom. So since then, we've done pretty well, right? So we'll see if it holds. But these are going to be challenging times for us, and I think we just have to really be paying attention as these fixes come into place and what the impacts are going to be of the fixes. On the local level, I've spent two of the last three Sundays at the Ventura Missionary Church, working with them. They're trying to coordinate and outreach similar to what is happening in East County where a church sort of leads the way in recruiting foster families. And they've done an amazing job, and we've really had very good success. And I compliment our staff. Our foster care staff was out there with me three weeks ago. And then yesterday, my own office staff was there. And we've had many people, many dozens of people sign up to come and get there. And I just want to remind all of us that we have to constantly remember those, we are the extended family for the foster kids of Ventura County, and we need foster families. And every time you get a chance, it's just, you know, happenstance, but when people are in situations in their life where things are changing, like their kids have moved away to college or somebody's lost a spouse, those are times when people actually think about, maybe I will add kids into my life and stuff. And just remarkable Patty Hunt, who some of you may know, but she is one of the few people in the county that takes babies that are born with physical problems, essentially drug addicted or alcohol syndrome babies. And she takes care of them in the first few months of their life, gets them stabilized so that another family, when they take that child in, the child has already become stabilized. She showed up both Sunday mornings. That's just how passionate she feels about the recruitment effort. She gave up her Sunday morning and sat there with her baby. It was a great draw in terms of having that, having a mother, you know, a foster mother and a baby right there in terms of being able to make the case. So anyway, it's an ongoing effort and just wanted to remind everybody about that. Thank you very much. And we're now, yeah Supervisor Long. This is their third time.
I know it is. And I'm sorry, I meant to write this down, but I'm sure we would all wish to do the same in that. I think Oakland and the loss of those, of the officers of the Oakland Police Department and the horrible tragedy that community is facing. I was at the event Saturday night and Chief Crombeck had received the news. And it was, it really hits home because Oakland has been a part of the 13 cities that were working on the whole gang response and enforcement and the efforts we're trying to do to look at how we deal with gang activity in our communities. And so we've gotten to know the leadership of the Oakland Police Department. So I'd ask if we could send a letter, perhaps under your signature, to express our condolences to the community and the families of the loss of the Oakland officers.
Definitely. We'll get that done. Thank you. All right. Okay, we're now ready. And thank you for remembering that because I had, did not have it written down, but wanted to make those comments. We're now ready to go to our non-time certain items. And the first of those, I believe, is item 35. And authorization approval, and we have 15 minutes, we should be able to get this all done. Mr. Dursy.
Thank you. Chair Bennett, Board Member Paul Dursy from the County Executive Office. I'm here again regarding the Seymour Park final, 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 hopefully final, to get them out of the library system. And we would ask your board to adopt this authorization to approve the indemnification agreement between the county and the city of Moore Park. And I think this has really been an exercise in perseverance, and I really want to thank Noel and his staff, specifically Joe Rendazzo and Lori Nimroff, who have persevered with me in this regard and worked with the city to try to make this happen. I appreciate that. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer it.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody have anything? We're ready for a motion?
I go ahead and make the motion. I encourage this kind of agreement with every city in the county. And we won't sue you, you don't sue us. Agreement, it's a great one.
We're ready to vote? All right. Thank you. And then motion carries. We're at item 36. Supervisor Long and myself on this letter. FEMA gives us an opportunity to create a community rating system. And if we do that, we can lower flood insurance rates for our residents. And this would be in the unincorporated area. Since we have many updates coming from FEMA that could have significant impact on flood insurance, it seems very appropriate for us to review this program and see whether it's cost-effective for us to implement it. We would, there may be some small allocation of general funds after they do the study, not to do this analysis, but we just have to look at the cost benefit analysis of that relative to our residents. Supervisor Long, you have anything you want to add on this?
I'm just providing the community rating system information piece that FEMA puts out. I think it gives, it'll give the board members and the public a general feel for what is looked at in that rating system. And I think it's worth us taking a look to see if it is something we could implement for the benefit of our unincorporated residents.
Right, good. Okay. So with that, our motion is to direct the CEO and PWA to evaluate the cost and come back with that. Hopefully that could be done sometime this spring. All right, okay.
That's my second.
All right. That's the motion and the second. And we're ready to vote on this. And I would just like to, item 37 on the correspondence calendar. We have many organizations that we partner with that are doing important work, and there's some opportunities to collaborate. We have this homeless prevention fund. I'd just like the CEO's office to stay in touch with us so we can understand how we're planning on using this $826,000. A lot of different ways that we can do that. I'd like to be able to weigh in before we make commitments with this money because going back to the 10-year planned-in homelessness, we've got to keep nailing down everything we can to be as effective as we can in terms of moving forward with that. So with that, take a motion to receive and file the correspondence. Okay, it's moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And, okay. And we have, what's that? Oh, the addendum. Thank you very much, yes. Item 40. And that is, this came in, and my apologies for this being an addendum, but Margaret Travis, who does a great job for us in terms of holding together, you know, we talk about that, somebody has to breathe, and somebody has to keep the patient alive while you're doing the surgery. Margaret really does that with trying to keep the arts. And she goes out, she hustles her own funding for this, has these programs out in the lobby all the time. She contacted us right at the end of last week. She has to have a board resolution before she can apply for the state grant, and the deadline is now. And so we were able to contact Noel, and he said we still had time to be able to put it on the agenda. So that's my motion is that we adopt this resolution, recognizing Ventura Arts Council as the official designated agency to execute the 2009 through 2011 state local partnership program grant contracts with the California Arts Council. Thank you. Yes. And we're ready for, to vote. Thanks for the reminder on that. Do we have anything else besides time certain items that anybody's aware of? Great. All right, we've got six minutes. Great. All right. We've got six minutes. That we're trying to have our 945 for to give certificates to are not here yet. We're going to just hold a couple of minutes. All right. We'll call the meeting back into session. And for our 945 item, we're really pleased to see that we have four of our five Ventura County Ethics Commissioners here. And these are people that have served with distinction for us. Supervisor Long, I know, was very instrumental in the concept of forming the Ethics Commission when we came forward with Campaign Finance Law. And as most of the people in this room know, county government would not function if we didn't have hundreds of citizens who are willing to volunteer their time to make various parts of county government work, whether it's people that serve on our Planning Commission, people that serve on our Ethics Commission, people that serve on our Aviation Advisory Boards. And all of those things happened. This one was a particular challenge because at least a few of you were there from the very beginning. I see Judge Peck was there from the very beginning when there was no template. They had to sort of figure out the rules of engagement and how they were going to operate. And everybody else had to get on board. It's also a challenge because the world of campaign finance reform law is not, the law is not settled. And there is this issue of interpretation out there. And so, it was, I know, a very serious effort by them. And I had the opportunity to watch them operate a number of times. And they took this responsibility really seriously. And I think really helped us kick off Campaign Finance Reform in Ventura County so that it was viewed as a credible process with credible people making the decisions as to whether there was a violation or not. So, what I'd like to do is present certificates. But before I do, Supervisor Long, if you have anything you would like to say also since it was your sort of initial concept.
Yeah, thank you. And it is just a small way to say thank you, but a deep appreciation for being willing to serve. And those who served from the beginning, that it was tough to really find our way through the ordinance and go through the initial challenges and experiences with it, both either coming from campaigns and candidates or from the general public, which was often a challenge in itself. So, we appreciate your work and thank you. And Supervisor, I'm going to correct you. There are so many committees and commissions and boards that we appoint folks to. And without people willing to volunteer and step forward, we could not have the good advice and do the job that we do. So, we thank you. Sure.
Chair, I also want to share something too. Mr. Chair, I want to thank Jane Tolemak. I haven't seen her for quite a while. And she's also was a council member in Oxnard and past mayor. So, I want to thank her too for the additional work that she's done for the county. Thank you, Jane.
And we haven't mentioned Honorable Joe Haddon, retired judge. He's not here? Okay. All right. That he was the independent selector who selected all of you to be on the Ethics Commission after the board, after the board made nominations and stuff. So, thank you all very much for your service. When I call your name, if you could come up, we'd receive a certificate. And then we'd just like to take one final picture of you here in the boardroom for us. And my understanding is Kathy Elliott Jones is not here. She hasn't slipped in at the last second, has she? Right. And she was appointed in 2004. And she served as vice chair 2007 to 2009. Then Elise Lazar was appointed 2007 representing District Two. And then Honorable Judge William Bill Peck, all right, was the chair of the commission from its inception. Stay right there. There you go. And then Georgiana Ringner, I hope.
Renier.
Renier, I'm sorry. And she was appointed in 2004 representing District Three and served as vice chair 2005 to 2007 and chair 2007 to 2009. And then Jane Tolemak. And Jane was appointed in 2005 representing District Five.
Hold your certificate up. There you go. And thank you, Dell Tompkins. Good to see you here. Retired.
I think it's actually close enough, right?
Mm-hmm.
What's that? You got something for her? Oh, you do, huh? Right. All right. Great. So, we have, you know, it's always a little humbling when you take somebody who has a 32-year career here and then you're going to do this and you realize, hey, there's a whole lot of a big body of work that's coming to an end. This is a remarkable body of work and somebody that I think has earned tremendous respect here in this organization. And so, we have this resolution, the Board of Supervisors honoring Steve Williams, 32 years of dedicated service. And I'd just like to read a few things. Probably one of the most enjoyable things that we get to do is somebody that you didn't know really well, you get to read this sort of what they did for 32 years and you find out. And it's remarkable. And it really is pleasing to sort of see what and how somebody got to where they are at this point in time. So, if you will sit back and enjoy this, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Steve Williams for over 32 years of dedicated service to the county of Ventura. Whereas after serving honorably in the Army in Vietnam on July 29, 1973, Stephen R. Williams began his public service for the county of Ventura in the County Surveyor and Mapping Department in El Rio as surveyor trainee. And in 1978, because he was better at writing board letters than mapping, Steve began working for the real estate division. And after Stephen had had a lapse in judgment in 1980 and went to work for the city of Burbank, he returned to the county in 1985, to our good fortune, to continuous work with real estate services. And for the next 13 years, Stephen worked as a county real property agent under the direction of Ray Ruiz. And in 1998, Stephen became the manager of real estate services. And Stephen earned the respect and recognition of his colleagues in the Public Works Agency as well as throughout other county agencies with whom he has developed many professional and personal relationships through his oversight of the county's real property and leasing programs. During his time with real estate services, Stephen is most proud of his successful negotiations for the acquisition of the land for the Todd Road Jail, the sale of the El Rio maintenance yard, and the acquisition and the construction of the Saticoy Operations Yard. And any of you that are familiar with any of those facilities, any one of those things would be a significant achievement to be able to make sure you acquire that land all properly for the taxpayers. Having received this agree from the same university attended by Barack Obama, Stephen has many, many talents that include playing the cello and piano, speaking German, French, Spanish, and Latin. And Stephen is a patient and opinionated about politics and never missed an opportunity to express his point of view. And with that, I just want to stop and digress a little bit for the benefit of everybody here. But we had, we were talking about reorganizing our Public Works Department. And we had a very open process about that. The CEO had a number of different options out there. We had Public Works Department members out there in the audience. And it was, I think, an excellent moment for the board in that people were giving us feedback. And clearly, one of the best pieces of feedback we got was from Stephen Williams. And he made a comment. And I just remembered, I went, that just ended that debate. He sealed, he sealed that decision, you know? And it was what you said and the credibility that you brought. And it was what you said and the credibility that you brought to that input. So after 32 years of dedicated service to the County of Ventura, Stephen's decided to retire from public service and pursue a life of leisure where he can enjoy the Epicurean delights of his favorite restaurants. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Stephen R. Williams for over 32 years of dedicated and accomplished service to the citizens of Ventura County. And we wish you a well-earned, long, and happy retirement. Alright, thank you. Why don't you come on up? I know Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Parks, you have an official certificate?
Well, you know, on that list, you forgot the Oak Park Mac.
Oh, yeah.
So I've got a little combination.
Well, that's been a mixed blessing, I'm sure.
It's been memorialized. The recognition of Steve Williams as Public Works Department Specialist for Oak Park since the pioneer days. Mr. Williams worked expertly with generations of Ventura County Supervisors, Oak Park residents, municipal advisory council members, the Oak Park Unified School District, Rancho Cine Recreation and Park District, and all Ventura County Departments provide high-quality services to Oak Park. And this is the Oak Park Community Spirit Award that you're receiving. And then I just wanted to say-
That's very touching, thank you. No, seriously. I had no idea.
Supervisor Bennett said it, you know, it's just like what you say, and it's also how you say it, you know? And you have been enjoyable, remarkable, and very pleasing, and we've enjoyed you very much. I've enjoyed you working with my office, and the Oak Park Mac has enjoyed your services. So I'll give you this too.
I've only seen one misstep in your 32 years, and you just made it, I tell you. Other Supervisors, anything that you want to add before we go down and make the presentation?
You can't leave us. You have to do that chip dump there, Steve, to really pass on all these-
Well, I'm not leaving. I mean, I'm not leaving the county.
Yeah. These years of experience, it's always been a pleasure, and you've always spoke truth to power, and that's always been appreciated.
Well, thank you so much.
Your work has been the highest professionally, and you're just, it's always been a joy to work with you.
Great. Supervisor, there goes-
Mr. Chair, I don't owe much, but you got me my office in Ochsard for a dollar a year, so you don't-
Thank you.
I would, first of all, I gotta say, when you said generations and pioneers, you didn't look that old to me. But anyway, no, I do appreciate, I know you did our office and what you did for the county and all the money you were able to save and do it. The thing that I was, it really hit me is when the landlord came back. You know, when you beat up the landlord, they come back and say, "Man, he does a great job," and they really like working with him. I mean, that, to me, shows that you can make it happen for both sides, and that's that professionalism, I think. And I think, as Supervisor Bennett said, when you say something, people believe it, you have great credibility. But I think the worst thing that's gonna happen, what are you gonna do about Roberta? I wonder, who are you gonna go to lunch with now?
Well, this is the hardest part.
I know, personal side. Anyway, I just want to say thanks and enjoy your retirement. I'm sure you'll find some great things to do, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And Ms. Robinson?
Well, I hope I can get through this without tearing up, but I've been very fortunate to work with Steve for 30-some years. And I had Public Works Agency when I was a junior analyst, I had Capital Projects, and I had Facilities. And Steve was always there to check with, really an incredible professional, talented response. Even when you have coworkers like that, it's really terrific. And it's part of what makes sitting here and working in this county terrific. And I have to say that the Saticoy Project, the El Rio de Saticoy Project, was really Steve's. There are other people who had higher levels in the organization, but Steve pulled that together, he negotiated that trade, we talked about what we needed to have, and Steve made it happen. Truly a remarkable performance, and I just really appreciate you, Steve, and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you so much.
So Steve, as I, as we bring these down, to present them to you, we're gonna ask you to make a few comments. I just would like to end it by saying, you brought a joy to the job that was refreshing for all of us, and it's easy for people to feel beaten down sometimes in public service, and you just didn't let that happen, and that's a remarkable gift you gave to the rest of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to-
Is it my opportunity?
This is it.
Well, it has absolutely been a joy for me. I have to reminisce a little bit. I mean, I started in 1973, which today seems like just yesterday. I mean, I cannot believe that, like I said, some 36 years have gone by, but when I started, I had my degree in German literature from Occidental College, asked the Barack Obama connection, he didn't stay there, he went on to bigger and better things. But in any event, I had this degree that wasn't very practical, and I did have my experience in Vietnam, and both in Saigon and Washington DC, and came back, and it was 1973, and I needed a job. And I had been very influenced by, the school that I went to was somewhat, it's a small liberal arts school, but I would say emphasis on the liberal. And after my Vietnam experience, I became pretty much of a 60s liberal, that's how I identified myself. But in any event, I was influenced, not to get too pedantic of it, I was influenced by John Kenneth Galbraith and his book, The Affluent Society, in which he speaks very rationally and passionately about the importance in our market economy of the public sector. And I just had this sense that if I'm, when I did start my career, I really wanted to work in the private sector. So I went to the, and I was interested in the county, and when I went to the little employment office on California Street, now I don't think anybody here probably remembers that, but it was the most, it was just a little storefront on California Street between Santa Clara and Main Street, and right across from it is now Cafe Fiore. And I went in there just thinking, "Well, I wonder what they have for someone with a degree in German literature." But, of course, there was nothing, but there was this one thing that intrigued me, and it was an advertisement for a job for a surveyor trainee, and it didn't require a degree, but you did have to have a driver's license. Well, I did have that. And I thought, well, that might be a practical way to start a career, you know, and I could probably do that. And so, and then I did leave some interest cards, but then I sort of forgot about that as I was talking to the lady behind the counter. And so after a while, we talked, and then she went on doing some business, and I looked at some other things, dropped off some interest cards, and then left. And I was walking down the street, now if you can imagine this in today's world, showing how the county family takes care of, we all take care of each other. I was walking down the street, going to the parking lot, and she ran out of the office, ran down the street, called my name, and said, "But don't you want the surveyor trainee application?" And I had sort of forgotten about it, so, "Okay, sure, I'll give that a try." Well, of course, the rest is history. So I started, I think probably because I had 11, 10 or 11 veterans' points, which helped me get on top of the list. And my first, within a few months, I was working, I started in July of 2003, and my first day on the job, I was holding the rear end of a plum bob, learning how to do surveying and pulling chains and that sort of thing up at the Happy Valley Drain in Ojai, and I thought I had died and gone to heaven. It was a beautiful, I actually had a real job, and it was a magnificent location, so anyway. But so the last many, many years, except for my brief sojourn in Burbank, and I was so grateful to be able to come back in 1985 to the same job, have just been marvelous, just has been a wonderful experience. Whatever you said about my attitude, it's just, I mean, it's reflected, I think, by the fact that we're all in this together, and we're all one big county family, and I've made many, many friends and had a very rewarding career. And I would say I certainly enjoyed, since this is probably, I'm assuming, my last presentation or discussion or account. Before this August party, I want to say I have so much appreciate working with all of you and your staff. You know, Joyce Taylor, Martine, and Gail have been wonderful, Kathy in your office, and I'm just learning to get in touch with your staff, Supervisor, there goes. Of course, Marty, we've worked together forever. I can remember projects, I mean, I don't know how many years ago, but we've had a marvelous relationship, and I just will miss you terribly. And of course Supervisor Parks, Jan Osterhaven's awesome. We're very, and I do appreciate the work, the fact that they recognize my involvement in Oak Park. It's been a challenge for all of us working in Oak Park, but we've tried really hard to take care of them, to take care of your constituents there. And of course Mark Lund, working with your office, Peter's been wonderful. And Noel, working with your office, especially Dan Murphy, has been a complete joy all these years. And Christine, I have to say also, working in your, with your office, having a good relationship with a very important department, especially some of the, well, Sandy Klein, some of the others that we work closely with, and with you, it's been a great pleasure all these years. And of course, my dear, dearest friend, and all the world, Roberta, we've had this marvelous relationship, collecting the Board's office, just professionally as well as personally, and I will miss her terribly, and all the wonderful lunches. Anyway, so I think I don't have anything more to say. I think I've done it all.
We'll give everybody just a second here. And we're to our other 10 o'clock time certain item, and that's Supervisor Parks and the presentation for the, I mean Supervisor Long for the presentation for the Advocates of Lifestyle of Exercise and Nutrition in Ventura County Program.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I figured I'd step down here to do this so we can move through it and appreciate these good folks who've come to celebrate with us the first Lean VC Champion Awards presentation. And as the board letter notes, the Community Commission established a couple of years ago strategies that we wanted to focus on to assist our children and families, and that those were, one was obesity, and one was substance abuse, and one is homeless. Today, we have a piece of that obesity work, and it comes from good people through our Health Department and others who've come together and formed the task force that started to work on the obesity issues, and they have now evolved into the Lean VC Task Force. And we've set up, and they did some good work and said, "We need to recognize people in our community who are doing good things related to getting us healthier." As you know, obesity is a nationwide issue, impacts children and adults obviously, but children where we see higher incidences of diabetes and asthma and things that are related to obesity. So today, I've been, we're bringing in today to recognize folks who have gone an extra step to make a difference in creating healthy environment and a healthy community. And I'd like to invite up Rego Vargas from Public Health and Betty Kraus, who's from our Human Services Agency, they're co-chairs of the Lean VC Task Force, to talk a little bit about the accomplishments and the history of the Lean VC, and then we're going to hand out the awards. We're very, Noel, I'll talk about that later. So first, let's have Rego and Betty.
Thank you Supervisor Long, members of the Board. Just real briefly, as Supervisor Long mentioned, obesity is a real public health crisis issue locally and statewide, with over one-third of our children being overweight, and one-third of those children expected to develop diabetes if the current trends develop. Surely, this is a public health issue and a societal issue that needs addressing. And that, to respond to that, the Public Health Department developed the, what used to be called the Obesity Prevention Task Force, and now we renamed to a Lean VC to more, reflect the advocacy work of our partners. It is a collective partnership of various organizations, and Betty Kraus is a co-chair of the group. So we're very pleased to be here today to recognize several folks and agencies that have gone out of their way to really do some good work around obesity prevention. The Task Force has developed this Champion Awards for the first time, and we hope to make this an annual event to further support and highlight the good work that's going on in our own backyard of Ventura County with regard to promoting healthy lifestyles of good nutrition and active lifestyle. So Betty, can you just give us a little bit more background in terms of the Task Force and some of the recent accomplishments?
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to come here, and we certainly appreciate Supervisor Long's support. And Supervisor Zaragoza was his first meeting with the Community Commission yesterday, so we're delighted to have him on board as well. I think he learned an awful lot about the Commission yesterday and the issues that are facing our county. And certainly, childhood obesity is a huge, huge issue. And as a matter of fact, there was just a study that came out, I believe, day before yesterday, in where high schools are located and where fast food operations are going on. And this is something that I know that Public Health has done a study in regards to where retail sales are, in regards to neighborhoods, and the types of retail sales that are there, and certainly leans itself towards going towards children and what they eat and what they can certainly get their hands on. And so one of the things that we decided with the Lean VC Task Force is that we needed a little motto. And our motto is, is that we want Ventura County to be recognized as the healthiest county in California. We were gonna go for the entire United States, but we thought we would start a little bit smaller and just start with the state of California. So that is definitely a motto, and this is something that we truly believed in. And we have representatives here today from the Lean VC Task Force that represent many, many areas within Ventura County. We have schools represented, we have healthcare agencies represented, worksite wellness is another huge issue, and I know the County of Ventura has their own wellness program for employees, which is a real model for the rest of Ventura County employees. We also have policy in the built environment, which is something that the Community Commission is definitely involved in. So what I would like to do is I would like to ask those representatives that sit on the Lean VC, as well as the Community Commission that are here representing, to stand up and certainly let's recognize them. We have the group here for Lean VC, would you like to stand and be recognized? So, let's get on with the awards, shall we? Because we have a very nice little gift basket for them as well that represents the healthy foods of Ventura County as well. So I'm gonna turn this back over to Supervisor Long, and let's recognize our recipients.
Thank you. And if I might just back up a minute, I'd like to call out those folks who are here who've been such a part of this Champion Awards presentation and the work, and that's Sarah Rivera, who's Ventura County Public Health Chronic Disease Prevention Program, Alicia Velikiana, Ventura County Public Health Network for a Healthy California, Sylvia Lopez Navarro, Public Health Chronic Disease Prevention, Jennifer DeRit, Public Health Children First, Childhood Obesity Prevention, Karen Schott from the Ventura Farmers Market. And we have great gifts, and we'll wheel those out, and they're healthy foods and gifts for our recipients today. Debbie Golden, Commissioner and Ventura Unified School District Trustee, happy that she's with us, and Dr. Trudy Ariaga, Superintendent of the Ventura Unified School District and a true leader in really working with the school district to be a healthy school district. Susan Heller, Ventura County Employee Wellness Program. We know we have a very strong and solid wellness program, award-winning wellness program. And then Rego and Betty. So these are the good folks who've been doing this wonderful work. So, our first award is going to, it's for Early Childhood Ages, Birth to Five Committee, and it goes to the Child Development Incorporated, CDI. And Mandy Izagiri, Director of Ochsard, CDI, is here. And Mandy will be accepting the award for CDI. In 2005, when Fred Williams of CDI opened its Early Childhood Education Program, it was one of the first of two preschool-for-all centers in Ventura County. Health, Wellness, Nutrition, Physical Activity are woven into the daily curriculum for the young children and their families, in line with the Lean VC efforts to prevent childhood obesity and improve the health of our young children in Ventura County. Come on. Walking trips around the community were added to the curriculum when teachers observed a heavy young child who couldn't walk without stopping and breathing hard. The walking trips were added, and it has enriched- The walking trips were added, and it has enriched and focused on literacy and helping children learn about their world by talking to the crossing guard to learn about safety, collecting rocks and sticks in the park to learn about natural materials, and visiting the community market for donations of wood and nails to learn about woodworking and construction. One child who inspired this effort wasn't singled out, but engaged in learning activities, helped him develop a healthier, more active lifestyle, and lose some weight in the process. In the warmer weather, the entire school community works together in the program's vegetable garden, and the garden was started by the Parent Advisory Committee from donated lumber and seeds and cared for through the hard work of the extended family, teachers, and the children. The bounty of fruits and vegetables, plants and flowers find their way into the program, and the children love it. Food program goes beyond ensuring nutritional guidelines are met. Places at the table are set by children who sit down together family-style with friends and teachers for a relaxed mealtime and conversation, and they're offered food choices to make their own decisions, and they serve the portions themselves. So this builds both literacy, self-help skills, and for the children in this program, maybe their only meal of the day, but it certainly ensures that they understand how important it is to eat healthy and nutritiously. So we'll present this first award to the Early Childhood CDI Incorporated for a Lean VC 2009 Champion Award. They're probably heavy. It's a great basket, and thank you to the Farmers Market, the Certified Farmers Market of Ventura County for donating these. Next award goes to Ventura Unified School District, and Sandy Kurwood, Director of Food and Nutrition Services. Sandy's here. Of the district will be accepting on behalf of, for the Healthy Schools Project. Thank you, Sandy, for being here. The Healthy Schools Project in the Unified School District teaches lifelong healthy behaviors through sequential nutritional education, garden-based learning, physical fitness, and a farm-to-cafeteria meal program, which is wonderful. Program operates using a harvest-of-the-month local crop as part of the classroom cooking lesson, nutrition classes, and in the garden, and to focus on local agriculture, environmental issues such as recycling, and vermicomposting, and the importance of seasonality, and food miles traveled. The local farming community presents Farmer in the Classroom Farm Trips, where students share their knowledge by taking recipes and gardening tips home, gardening tips home. So the Unified, Ventura Unified is truly a leader in this nutritional program and working on our children, helping our children to understand the importance of eating healthy. So we congratulate you.
Excuse me, Trustee, Trustee Golden, could she could just bring that food right back to the boardroom?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's getting close to his grazing hour. Okay, our next award is the Worksite Wellness Committee, and the award goes to the City of Thousand Oaks. Cheryl Johnson, the Associate Human Resource Analyst, will be accepting the award on behalf of the city. There you are. Glad you're here. The City of Thousand Oaks is being recognized for creating a workplace environment that supports healthy choices and lowers employees' health risk, providing a quality wellness program on a minimal budget utilizing public and private partnerships. The city offers a variety of nutrition and fitness programs for its employees, including healthy cooking demonstrations and a state-of-the-art onsite fitness facility accessible to all employees from nine, from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. City of Thousand Oaks employees have lost over 1,400 pounds with the Weight Watchers at Work program since January '06. I think I need to move there. So, on behalf of the Lean VC, City of Thousand Oaks Worksite Wellness Nutritional Champion, congratulations. Boy, you're right Supervisor, we need to chomp into that one. Okay, next up, we have the award for the Built Environment, and that is going to go to Rick Cole, City Manager of the City of Ventura. Mr. Cole, would you please join us up here? Join me. And good to see you.
Thank you Supervisor.
Rick Cole has been a leader in the efforts by the City of Ventura to promote creating healthy cities through the built environment. In 2005, the Ventura City Council unanimously adopted a new general plan stressing pedestrian, bike, and transit-friendly infill development. Mr. Cole has worked successfully with the City Council leadership to implement the new vision with award-winning plans and projects. And Mr. Cole has been on a few panels that I've either been on or listened to him speak about the built environment and the importance of how we create our communities and make them friendly for both pedestrian and bicyclists and walkability, to make them both sustainable but healthy, and to be commended by the VC.
Thank you Supervisor. Could I share a few thoughts with your colleagues?
Absolutely.
I want to accept this on behalf of the City Council and the community of Ventura, but also to pay real tribute to the legacy of this county. If it were not for the Guidelines for Orderly Development, if it were not for the countywide SOAR and the eight cities that have adopted SOAR, the infill strategies that we have pursued in Ventura would not be possible. And if it weren't for the example of cities around our county like Thousand Oaks, which has worked so hard to preserve open space, and Oxnard, which has worked so hard to promote affordable housing, we again would not be able in Ventura to have the kind of success we've had in recent years. And the reason I wanted to say this is because as we look ahead today, we have an extraordinary opportunity to pull together the partnership between education, we have great partners in our local school district, the county and the Health Department have been great partners in building a bridge between health and the built environment, but also our Ventura County Transportation Commission, the Ventura County Economic Development Corporation, the Civic Alliance, and all 11 jurisdictions to really think about the future through a blueprint process, through this SB 375 opportunity. We have a great, great opportunity to not just attack the issue of obesity, but of air pollution, of transportation, of open space, of affordable housing. That truly would make Ventura the healthiest county in California. That's all of our goal, and I think there's a great opportunity in the next year to work on that goal collaboratively.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Watson. Okay, and our last recipient is going to go to our very own Santa Paula Hospital Clinic for Healthcare as a Lean VC Champion and a representative. I'm flipping the page here because I've lost my place, so please, there we are, Dr. Heather Nichols. No. On her behalf, okay, and you. Annie, thank you. I didn't have that, but thank you. As the board knows, our philosophy of healthcare is healthcare and prevented, prevent, providing services to keep people healthy before they get ill to the point that they're in our emergency rooms. So it is a healthcare system, not a disease system, so disease prevention. Cese Puede is a free eight-week-long wellness program for overweight and obese children and their families in Santa Paula. We target six- to 12-year-old Hispanic kids. Eighty-three percent of the children who start the Cese Puede program are obese. Eighty-three percent. Since the program began, fifty-seven percent of those that finished the program decreased their BMI during the eight-week session. Those of you, that's Body Mass Index. We're proud to have been given a mini grant from Ventura County Public Health to support this program in its initial stages, and we look forward to further expanding the program in 2009. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we congratulate you, and the VC Lean, we congratulate you as the 2009 Champion Award. And thank you for being here. And I think that concludes the presentation and comments. If the board wishes to add any comments and congratulate all of our recipients. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much Supervisor Long. Congratulations to all the recipients and for the people that put that together. We now have our 10:30 item, and that's Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just one, one minute here for people to head out. What's that? Oh. Oh, there we go. Thank you very much. Approved participation and authorized County Executive Officer for Memorandum of Understanding with the Cities. Ms. Madden.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, Kristi Madden, County Executive Office. I'll be quick, I know we're running a little behind schedule here. Today, we have a request for approval of the county's participation in and taking a leadership role for a Memorandum of Understanding with the Cities of Camarillo, Ventura, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks for participation in the state's Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This MOU authorizes the county to prepare a regional application for up to $2.6 million in Tier Two NSP funds, and it provides an opportunity for the preparation of a Tier Three application at members' requests. The Tier Two NSP funds are to be used for acquisition, rehab, and resale or rental of foreclosed properties for persons of up to 120% of median income, which is a divergence from typical HUD funding. A hundred and twenty percent of median income equates to about $100,000 per year for a family of four. The Tier Three funds must be used to assist families at 50% of area median income. The county's share of funding under this MOU will be available for projects in the unincorporated area and within our entitlement area, CDBG entitlement area, our small cities. Once the NOFA is published on the state's HCD website, staff will solicit specific information from the parties to this MOU for preparation of our application. HCD has indicated that publication of this NOFA is expected any day, so we're waiting. It is unknown how long we will have to prepare the application, what level of specificity will be required for the application, or how much time we might have to spend funds. So we're all just kind of waiting with bated breath for the publication of this information. In exchange for the county's willingness to take on this leadership role as the lead applicant, we will retain the 5% administrative allowance under the grant program. Once the grant is received, we will enter into contracts with each of the signatories to the MOU, similar to the way we do our CDBG entitlement program currently, passing along all of the obligations and compliance criteria with the parties to the MOU. Staff is still evaluating how best to use the county's share of funding. We have located bank contacts, the organizations that own these properties. We are discussing with the Housing Authority and other jurisdictions. Some cities intend to use the money as down payment, procure traditional financing, hold on to the property, and then rent it out to low-income people. Some cities are going to use it for homebuyer assistance, rehab the property, and resell the property. So we do have some flexibility in how we use the funding under this program. We will be returning to your board with another public hearing prior to submitting the application for these funds. Today's hearing is intended to solicit public input on suggestions and recommendations on how we might use this funding. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions and offer you open the public hearing.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it's an excellent program because we can use this money, and I know Oxnard's getting its own share, but we can use this money to upgrade the homes that are in foreclosure, that are in the longer-than-mode, and they're in disrepair, and also I think it'll help the values of the surrounding properties also in this neighborhood. So I think it's an excellent program that we ought to utilize to clean up those foreclosure homes and abandoned homes, and I think to improve the quality of life for all, you know. So I think it's an excellent program.
You, Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. I think the title speaks, speaks volumes, stabilization, and I think we have great need, and we should move as quickly as we can. I appreciate that the cities have moved so quickly to agree to this joint effort, because I think we're, we're stronger in the numbers and we're stronger in the application to have it, to have, process it this way. So good work, and appreciate it. Thank you.
You, you mentioned that you're soliciting input in terms of how to use these funds, et cetera, and I wanted to point out, but I hope as to the extent possible that we can, we can double our money here, which is, I don't, I mean, double our impact, which is if we're going to do this and we're going to stabilize something in a neighborhood, if at the same time, we could, we could get the property and be able to use it for a special population that we have that is in need, I think that that would be helpful. To the extent that we think putting that into our application helps our application, I wanted to get that said early in the process, but that's what I will be looking for, is to what extent are we able to leverage this and get two things to happen, whether it's emancipated youth, or whether it's a mentally, you know, somebody in our mental health program, a targeted population there.
Homeless.
Somebody that's chronically homeless, you know, whether it could be for an organization that could then use the home for the chronic homeless, a transition home, all of those things I think are out on the table, but that's, I just think we have so few of these dollars that we should try to do both. I would not want to just buy the home, turn it over, you know, to somebody else, and, you know, alls we've done is clear one home out of, out of foreclosure at this point in time.
That is actually a strategy that is going to be used by the City of Ventura. Their Housing Authority will be implementing their program for them. They will use NSP money to put the down payment on the property, they will take out traditional financing for the mortgage, they will put Section Eight tenants in there with the Section Eight revenue sufficient to cover the cost of paying the mortgage, and they are targeting special needs populations specifically for implementation of the Ten Year Strategy to end homelessness. So that's exactly what they're doing, and we're looking at that model and talking to our Housing Authority about that as well.
Well, I'm very interested in that, and to the extent that, my guess is, we probably need a little bit more information before the board actually sets that up as the policy, but I would be interested in having the board say, "That's what we want to do," something along that lines also for us here. That's, that'd be a motion that I would be making at the appropriate time, and I just would ask the CEO's office to let us know when that appropriate time is for you to get that direction from us. Any other comments about this? Okay, second. And let's, what's that?
No public comment.
No public comments, thank you. So we're ready to vote? Thank you. Now Supervisor Zaragoza, this motion passes, and you're on to your parliamentary presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I'd like to invite Sharon Hill-Brent, she's the Vice President of, is that a key? I think, is it, is that a kai? And also Peggy O'Brien, the President of the National Association of Parliamentaries, right, and I'm going to read a little something here, and I'll go down and give you your commendation. This is a ceremonial resolution by the Board of Supervisors and proclaiming the month of April as Parliamentary Law Month. And this is a ceremonial resolution by the Board of Supervisors, and we have not spent a lot of time deliberating or discussing this resolution, and we have not spent a lot of time remunning or resources on this issue. However, it represents a very, very important parliamentary law and Robert's Rules of Order, which is incredibly important to all of us. Parliamentary law helps reserve the rights to address our government. Our Board of Supervisors meetings and other governmental bodies use parliamentary law and Robert's Rules of Order to conduct the meetings. Robert's Rules of Order allow for well-organized discussion of issues. One person speaks at a time. The proper use of parliamentary procedure protects our freedom, our rights, our views of the majority and the minority. Individuals and others can be presented and respected even if we agree or disagree with them with their point of view. We are fortunate to live in the United States. We are fortunate to live in the United States, which is a great country. In some foreign countries, there's no freedom to speak out or give our views or point of views to participate in government. By celebrating Parliamentary Law Month and Robert's Rules of Order, we are reminded how fortunate we are to live in this country, the United States of America. So I'd like to come down and present this resolution to you.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Helen, you want to say something?
I'm just going to take this guy.
Okay, listen, take a picture and then we'll sit back.
It's an honor to accept this resolution on behalf of Zeta Chi parliamentarians. We are a study unit of the National Association of Parliamentarians and the California State Association of Parliamentarians, and we meet to study Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, the 10th edition, that's the official one, and we strive to improve our parliamentary We do meet on the third Monday of every month except June and December. We meet at the Topping Room of the EP Foster Library in Ventura. So every third Monday at 7:15, it would be great if at any time you'd like to come to one of our meetings and see what we do. Thank you very much. 7:15, starts at 7:15.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We are now at item 24, and it's a presentation of human service agencies on access to county services. Mr. Zimmerman.
Good morning. Let me get started here. Good morning, and thank you Chair Bennett for asking us to come back and report on how to access much of our services, and in particular, those that are impacted due to economic downturn, which we are seeing many face some struggles in their lives right now economically. What is being handed out to you are two packets and how I'll address today access. We kind of have two major access points or services that we deliver to help individuals that may be struggling at this time due to their financial situation, loss of jobs, and so forth. One is dedicated to accessing employment and employment services, and the other one is accessing public assistance for basic needs. And it kind of takes two paths that way, both equally important and both equally interactive, but oftentimes, individuals start through one avenue and end up in another and so forth. So we'll kind of explain how all that works and how individuals can gain access to those services there. As you know, the demand for our services have been increasing significantly over the last year or so due to the economic conditions. As reported, food stamps applications, CalWorks applications, and Medi-Cal applications all are on the increase due to the needs of individuals. The majority of them, as presented earlier, are due to loss of income, primarily due to loss of job or reductions significantly in hours in which individuals have no longer to meet their basic needs, whether it's housing costs, food. Many are losing their insurance through employers and so forth, and so these are other needs that families are searching of, and we're seeing that increase occur, as well as the general activity within our job and career centers, which is the access point for employment is up significantly. Let me start, and I'll give a lot of just kind of presentation information of where we are and how we get access to these service points. Here, starting out, what I've outlined here are the intake and eligibility centers. These would be centers that are dedicated for the basic needs assistance for individuals that may not have enough in their budget to meet their food needs, may need some medical care for children, and so forth, can go to these locations and access it. And I'll explain, there's two ways. You can access services via the telephone as well as walking into a center, and both are equally accessible and equally expedient in order to start the process of accessing services. Primarily, we have a toll-free number, and anyone can call that number, and we will route them to the appropriate location nearest to them in order to satisfy their needs. They can also visit our website, of which I'll demonstrate on how that works and what can be accessed on the website, as well as they can contact any center directly and get the information at those centers there. Every intake and eligibility center listed has a companion that has both access for basic assistance as well as job and career activities, and resources are located, co-located in these centers. An individual may apply by just walking in, and no appointment is necessary. Eight to five are operational hours in which an individual can receive services. We do have bilingual staff that runs the gamut of languages within the county, and also we have onsite childcare in which, at some of our locations, in which a child can be taken care of with a tenant there, and that way the parent can take care of the administrative needs in applying for aid. Also, they can access applications for food stamps and Medi-Cal via the telephone, so that they can call and request an application to be sent to their home, and as they do, in the same day as the call comes in, it will be processed and sent in the mail, and then as the application is filled out and sent back in, within 10 days later responded to on the completeness notification and next steps that they would need to take there. So within about 10 business days, they can almost complete the whole process and get some services if it is not an immediate needs basis. We do have on occasion, we do upon request, can go to the home and actually process applications. We are a little bit limited in staff in that resource, but that is an option to individuals who are homebound and could not otherwise visit one of our centers there. The same thing that I just described in Medi-Cal, it's the most common mail-in type application that they can do remotely and really not have to be encumbered with some time in the offices. The other programs right now, as we work through state regulations and so forth, require some interaction in the office to take place, but it can start remotely through the mail. Let me focus on now the job seeker access is also, we have a 1-800 number that anyone can call, and that's a central number in which they will identify which center they're most close to in proximity to refer them to that or to send information to them via mail. Also, they can access any of the information that we have on the website there. If you notice in the pamphlets that are handed out, all the access information are contained in brochures such as this one. If someone's looking for a job seeker, they can open that up and look, well, what type of services are at the Job and Career Center, and how do you access them here? Is on every flyer and pamphlet that we offer. Normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight to five, also no appointment is necessary that people can come in. We have experienced significant increase in the Job and Career Centers at this point. The resource rooms, which are mainly computer access, computers that they can do to write resumes, provide letters, search out networks, post their resumes, and so forth, on there has risen significantly. And throughout the week, we have lines in which individuals are waiting to get on the computers, so we are access, or limiting access occasionally to computers. However, once they get introduced to the Job and Career Center and the network that is provided there, they can go to any computer that has Internet access and avail themselves of the same resources of job searching and accessing those sites that we have educated them on. So they can go to the library, they can go to any Internet cafe and do the same thing. I went over that there. Some of the highlights that as a job seeker comes in, that there's more resources available to them than just access and self-help into the computer on looking for a job. There are sponsored workshops that they can attend on various topics, from writing a resume to presentation skills, to how to manage your affairs as you're limiting your income and so forth. So there's a whole range of workshops that they're able to go into and to provide extra help. In the resource rooms themselves, we do have resource room staff there that will work one-on-one with individuals as time permits in order to assist them. So it's just not an open forum. They will get instructed and get the guidance that they need in order to better position themselves in the job market. The Job and Career Centers, many of them are co-located with the intake and eligibility centers, as well as there's additional Job and Career Centers. There's a total of eight of them throughout the county that span almost all the geographical locations within the county for access. And we do run a number of ads on the TV, actually, on radio and so forth, communicating out broadly of the Job and Career Center network and where they can access services, and we've been seeing a significant uptick in that participation. Also, another connection point into our services is through Rapid Response. And Rapid Response is as an employer is downsizing, they will contact us through various means in order to make a transition of those individuals that are being laid off into our services or trying to transition them into other employment. We've seen a significant increase this year in companies that are in distress and requiring our services, and what that basically entails is a team of individuals from the Business Employment Services Department, and oftentimes with EDD and UI and so forth, will go out and explain to individuals what's going to happen as they lose employment and where they can go to receive services and to help transition. Many individuals in, when we get into Rapid Response environments are, a lot of times, the people being laid off haven't been in that active labor market or searching for a job in 10 to 20 years, and so their familiarity with resumes, with how to even start all over, the new world of job search, which is primarily done electronically and is communicated different than probably when they first obtain their job, is a big concern for many individuals that are exiting companies. So it's important, and it's a valuable resource to get that connectivity, to say, hey, we can help you and bridge that information gap in order for you to be successful in searching for new employment. Let me go over real quick. We have worked with the county ITS and the CEO's office to position ourselves a little bit better on the county webpage for people to give access. So anyone can go to the county webpage, which is countyofventura.org, and on the right side of the screen, it says "Help is available," and it describes if you're in need of public assistance or employment or so forth, click here. And so that's on the first page that they can access that. We really have multiple avenues of access out there, communicated in various forms and activities via phone, multiple websites, but they all lead us back to the basic information, the centralized information that everyone needs there, but we try to make it as expansive as possible. So if you click on that, it'll take us right to the Human Services page, and this is where you can drive whatever services you think you stand in need of, and we'll be evaluating the utility of this and see if we can improve it over time as with everything. But with this, on the right side, it's, you know, these are resources, helpful resources you may look into and you may gain access to. For example, you may click on, well, what is food stamps? I've never had to do it, but I know I'm short on accessing and providing for my family. What is it about? And so by saying I need help, get to this page, you can click into food stamps, and it will bring you up information about the program, how to apply, and whether you'll be eligible. This sheet will come up when you click onto food stamps, and it gives a brief overview of the program. It's a supplemental nutritional program to provide assistance for those that are in need, and it provides you the basic qualifications for the programs. What we've seen is that a number of individuals have never accessed services before from a government entity and don't understand what are the qualifying requirements for the assistance. This will be kind of out there so they kind of have an understanding prior. So if they don't qualify, which some are, not eligible if their UI benefits are such at a level, they would not qualify until those benefits ran out, and that's just the nature of the program. But this will help them understand that process so they don't come with an expectation that is going to be unmet, and so they could read on there and assess in some fashion, you know, is that going to be a helpful program and am I eligible for it? Likewise, likewise, a job seeker can click on a job seeker, and they'll get a job seeker pamphlet, the same one that you have in there. It's hot linked in there, so they can click on the websites and so forth and take them right to various locations throughout the Internet, but this gives a basic description of what services are available for a job seeker and what can they expect out of the services when they walk into a Job and Career Center. Likewise, the virtual one-stop, and that's what we call it, the connectivity to the labor market, this is, and it can be, there's many avenues to get to this site, but this is the main site that we use statewide in partnership with EDD and others to post jobs. Employers post many of their jobs on there. Anyone, this is a free access site that they can go to, they can say, I'm interested in looking for a job in this occupation and so forth. Yesterday, or two days ago, I went in there and looked at it, there's just many, many different jobs available and searchable by location, by, you know, salary, by job type, description, and so forth, and they can search and make contact electronically, they can post their resumes and so forth, a very powerful site. Likewise, it's not just for the job seekers, it's for the employer as well. There's a section there for employers to also search for resumes as well as post sites, job availability on that site as well, and it's all free to the public and the employer. We also have as general information on there, the sites of every location that we have, and those sites are broken out by what services are provided in each site. The majority of our locations do have comprehensive services or nearly all the services that one would need, both in basic assistance as well as the job and employment side. We also have general information in the community, so if you go in there, you can pick that I'm in the Ojai area, and what services are available in Ojai. And so we have a listing of not only our services there, but nonprofits and other entities that are located in that geographical area that also may lend assistance in some fashion that we may not cover there. The new feature we added on there is on benefits information. It's a federal website that accesses, that if someone can go in there and say, you know, I have multiple needs and I'm not sure exactly what's available to me, they can go to this website via our connection there, it's called Benefits Checkup, and basically, an individual will give some demographic information and some characteristics of their situations, and it will then narrow it down, and it can be California or even nationwide, and it will identify all those eligible programs that one may be eligible for and how to contact those entities that provide it. provide it. For example, Utility Assistance Program and other things that aren't necessarily in our area, a sphere of services, but is generally out there available through multiple, multiple programs. I think there's, you know, I don't know the number, but someone did the test and it came up that they were eligible for about 107 different programs, all right? From renter's assistance to utility assistance and so forth. A very powerful tool to access. This is the form that it has and a questionnaire that it goes through. So in basic terms, there's no wrong door to get access to the services that they'll be directed to. I think the most powerful way now communication is through the Internet, and that's getting greater and greater, especially with the younger generation. And so we have four websites that any website will take them to resources that they need. They can go to the county website, which is the countyofventura.org. They can go to our website directly, which is vchsa.org. They can go to the venturacountyjcc.org would be there, as well as the WIB, which is wib.ventura.org. All websites lead to the same road of services that we can provide, as well as the 1-800 numbers, 1-800-500-7705 is for workforce. But if anyone calls that, it's a central number located at our central admin building, which will direct them wherever they need to go, as well as our 866 numbers. So those are how individuals can gain access to our system and our ability to connect with them. Obviously, under special circumstances for individuals, if they're homebound and so forth, there are avenues to help them out. We just need to be aware of those in order to access services to them. I went through that fast, but just wanted to give an overview that it's there. People are accessing it. We're obviously want the communication to go out broader. We're at about a 50%, 50% increase in our food stamps, which seems to be the most prominent program right now. And that is probably the first indicator of the economic condition of reducing incomes and they can't, it's between rent and food at this point in time and other basic needs that they're trying to support. And so that's a shortfall. We're still at about an approval rate, about 60% is about historically. We, an individual coming in about six out of 10 will qualify. But the pool has grown quite significantly. So actually, the number of individuals that don't qualify are much larger than what we've experienced in the past. But, so the more we can get the word out and help individuals through this transition, the better. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much. I know Supervisor Ergo wants to speak. I just want to mention one thing. And one, this is exactly what I was looking for, is a clear way for us to identify the simple ways that people can enter into the system and begin to access services. Because as you said, there are so many new people that haven't accessed services in the past. They're not familiar with this. This may be the first time in their life they're doing that and stuff. I hope that the members of the media will help us get that information out to people because the demand certainly is growing. And there are people out there that I'm sure are still floundering. They just don't know about this and don't know what to do. So excellent presentation. Thank you. Supervisor Ergo?
The question I had, and I read it here as I was waiting, that the computers and faxes and so forth are available at the county facilities?
Yeah, the Job and Career Centers, we have a number of computers anywhere from 15 to over 20. And yes, and they're able to access it, print their resumes, and all that is at no charge to them.
And if they have no experience, will the staff help them?
Absolutely.
The other question I have here on your flyer here is certificate training. How many hours does it require to get one of those certificates of skilled certification?
It all depends on the skill, the skill that they're trying to acquire. So they vary from a very short time to, you know, several weeks worth of work, depending if it's at the adult school or if it's we're running. They can go there. Now, a certificate, someone can go in there and be certified for a typing exam. And so we do have a software on there that will certify your competencies in certain skill areas right there. And many do come in because jobs say, well, I need you to type or be proficient in Word or whatever it may be. You can go in there, take the test and have a
And they can use that in the resume.
Absolutely.
And the 4000 South Rose Road, is that Oxon College?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Supervisor Parks?
I have a couple of questions. It was a great presentation, but even more so, wonderful material and accessibility. A lot of this material is bilingual. I was just wondering, is there some kind of bilingual access on the Internet to the HSA yet?
We don't have bilingual Internet yet, but
But there is an extraordinary outreach, and you know, like one side's English, the other side's Spanish.
Yeah, and all our brochures that you have there are Spanish-English combination.
Okay. And then, and this seems very thorough that you have them by area, the outreach of everything that HSA provides and is incredibly helpful. Appreciate that. A question that I have, which isn't related to your presentation, but you might be able to answer because it addresses the same kind of needs, is we're hearing the tremendous backlog in unemployment calls and people, I guess the state isn't answering the phone as quickly as we'd like and people are hearing horror stories about being put on hold for hours. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do to assist that?
I don't know if we can remedy that issue. The state centralized their UI many years ago, and so it is through a telephone network. We do provide, many people do come to our offices asking for UI assistance. We do help them on how to get access to the state. But other than that, we're not able to intervene beyond giving them the access point at this time.
Is there more than just telephone to access the unemployment information that they need?
I think they go to the website, can't they?
You can apply online?
You can apply online, yeah.
That would be really helpful, I think, if we can provide that information so we can help alleviate some of that overload.
It's probably why there are lines. You talked about lines in the Job and Career Centers. I'm sure that some of the people in line are trying to access UI benefits through those computers as well as preparing resumes and all of that. And Barry and I talked about talking with the libraries about educating them a little bit about the UI benefit issue and maybe accessing, using library computers, people knowing that they can use the library computers for accessing the benefits too. So you have a wider range of accessibility points.
Yeah, and I don't know if we provide that on our Internet, but if someone's already on the Internet, that's a good source to
Yeah, that's a
to know that they can do that online as they have to get on the phone.
I agree. We can easily build that link. That's a good point.
And the last question is, is it possible to enroll with Medi-Cal online or does that only have to be done through?
No, that has to be done on a paper application right now. We are looking at simplification and online applications, but that gets into a realm beyond me.
I just say, these are very sweet little books. I guess Cedars, I know I put them together. Sad though, you know, my mom lost her job, but it helps the child to address it. But my dad lost his job. I'm sorry that we have to put these out, but it's nice that they're there.
Yeah. If you know of a need beyond what you have there, just let us know and we'll be able to equip you appropriately.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Very good, very good succinct information. And it goes back to thinking about years ago, and it was through federal welfare reform that board, this board talked about implementing that and setting up our Job and Career Centers and setting up these community hubs that could really access both for the employer and the employee and to really help us with eligibility and moving folks off of what was then called welfare. And I think these centers are serving us extraordinarily well today and these times and will for the next couple of years. You noted in your presentation, Barry, three telephone lines, one Rapid Response, one a toll-free line for intake and eligibility, and another one for job seeker. And I would be interested in knowing what kind of volume we get into those three different lines and what it costs us for those three different lines. And you probably can figure out where this is going, whether this is something that could be collapsed into a 2-1-1 system. As we saw the logo up there, and we know 2-1-1 is having some, as we all are, some issues with funding. And I don't know, it may not be applicable because certainly you still need trained personnel to be answering those lines. And that's very important, particularly when people are under the stress they're under now. But I'd just be interested in what the volume and cost and
We can put an overview together, how our phone system works.
Yeah.
Where the connectivity is.
I'd be interested in that. Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Good job.
Thank you very much. It's taken a motion to receive and file?
Still moved.
Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
And I agree Supervisor Bennett, any way that our wonderful friends in the media can help in getting word out, letting people know, the better for our community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to the HSA staff. Now we're at our final 10:30 item, and that's receiving file, our investments month ending February 28th. Our esteemed professionals?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Well, we're pleased to come before you to present the February investment pool report. And as the board letter points out, we are still above the 3% mark on the pool return for that month, but we can wave a fond goodbye to that. The translation, though, I think of these figures, $4.5 million of investment earnings that are distributed to local government, is that we still are in the position of having really, given the circumstances, extraordinary earnings through the Treasury pool while we are still adhering to those very strict guidelines that we have that protect the security of the corpus of what we're investing. One of the things that I think is interesting, as I was sitting in the boardroom here and listening to the earlier presentations, particularly from HSA, is we are all looking during this interesting challenge period, we're all looking at the same picture that has got a lot of negative implications. But one of the things I thought I would just lay out on the table because it is not negative, except for one side of it, is that I keep reading reports that American consumers have made an extraordinary reversal in their patterns, that they are actually beginning to save those who are working. And isn't it fascinating to see that that pattern of saving, which means not as much consumer spending, which means not as much retail activity, translates into something negative for now. But I have to believe that what we are laying here as a country is some incredibly important foundations for what the next generation is going to have. They're going to have a huge burden to pay off what is being spent in order to stimulate things. But I think that this change in buying patterns and this shift to savings is going to be a really important base that they have to work from. So I think that in the midst of all of this testing and trial and turmoil, there are some things that are particularly encouraging. And I'm looking forward to watching the flower open on that. I've asked Mr. Hanson to be here to, again, be able to provide you with a more detailed response if you have any questions about what is exactly going on in the portfolio. And I'll yield the platform to Bob.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matheny.
My only comment, are they putting the money in the bank or under their mattress?
Well, then the next comment is which is safer?
The bank.
Okay.
I do. Good morning. I think when I left last time Supervisor Foy had a question he had heard on the radio that one of our companies that we invest in, Toyota, had been extended a $2 billion line of credit. The funny thing is, news like that comes out, I'm already at work, I haven't even heard it. So by the time I get back to focusing on the news, it was interesting that the Japan Bank International Corporation, which is the Fed in Japan, has extended a $2 billion line of credit to start with. Now, they already, as I mentioned last time, have the CPFF, the Commercial Paper Funding Facility, through our government for $24 billion. And through their own methods, they've, as of 12/31, they have about $24 billion outstanding. So the more avenues of revenue that they have, the better. And they will, of course, use whatever's cheapest. Just as a footnote, I use LA County because that's one probably portfolio that I respect the most. Not tone, I've known, as I told you, Tony Mason, since he started, came over and sat with me at the bank. They own $100 million in Toyota CP. And what surprised me, they own $179 million in term notes, one to three years. So they've got a lot of confidence in Toyota at this point. The handout that I gave you, Supervisor Bennett, you said you'd kind of like to have a handout to see what we're doing as we go along month to month. And you'll recall that we changed the investment policy from a six or whatever it was, $600 million limit to no limit on agencies, which also LA County happens to have no limit. At this point, I put home loan in red because, all things equal, I tried to even out the tanks to make them equal. But recently, home loan has had about a quarter of a point higher yield. And that's because they weren't involved with the mortgage corp and the Fannie Mae when the government came out and said, you know, we will stand behind your debt. The reason I'm not worried about home loan, first of all, they've already been in trouble and we bailed them out in the 90s. So being a government-sponsored enterprise, started by a federal act of Congress, there is no way that they would not stand behind their debt. And you can also see from the description page, which comes off Bloomberg, everything is entered in with a Q-SIP. It's like your social security number. They're AAA, AAA. So in trying to capture some sort of yield, and you'll notice that at this point, 84% of my portfolio is agencies, so that means 16% is paper. In trying to capture some yield, I am buying, I have more home loan at this point than I have any other agency. But I'm not really concerned at all. One thing for the future, I'll be looking at, last time I discussed with you, the temporary liquidity guarantee program where corporations that are approved by the Fed can issue debt, which is backed by the FDIC 100%. So in essence, you're buying a government security. I'll be looking with the tax money at probably two names, GE and Wells Fargo, probably because I'll see a better inventory from those companies because of the people I deal with have access to that, where some of these deals are so solid, they never hit the street. Because in essence, you're buying a government, to reiterate, guaranteed FDIC 100% paper. And you may hear people say, well, just how sound is FDIC? Well, the government is not going to let anything happen to FDIC for any reason because that's really one of the pillars of the whole system. So that tells you a little bit about what I've done and what I'm thinking for the future, which could change daily.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from Mr. Hanson? Appreciate the update. Appreciate the additional information for us today. Thank you. Motion received and filed? Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And that motion carries. We're at our last item before we go into closed session, and that's our CEO and
So I'll make it nice and relatively short. I did want to advise your board about the activity that we are I did want to advise your board about the activity that we are doing across the county relative to the Federal Stimulus Act. And we have a concerted effort of informing our departments about what's out there, what's available. We are asking them to look at stimulus money relative to what do we have to do by statute that this might apply to, what do we have to do for efficiency that these monies might apply to, and what are the possibilities for offsetting potential reductions that we expect to see in the future? So we are getting proposals together, they range from electronic transcripts, medical information, moving forward with electronic medical information in both our jails and our hospital, as well as things like alternative fuel for the diesel, all of our diesel equipment applications that will relate to those kinds of things. So there's a wide range, people are scouring what is available. As part of that process, we will be setting up a teaming site, you know, we talked about teaming software here, and this is a perfect application, wherein departments that put together grant applications, those will be posted on the teaming site, and the rest of the county family can access them and take boilerplate information off of them for their future other grant activities. So we're excited about that, and we're excited about the work that's being done out there. We're also having, Sue Hughes is the main controller in terms of what's going out, our analysts are working with their individual departments. We are going to be evaluating whether the organizations out there need additional grant writing capacity that we can bring to bear during this process. So that's one of the activities we have underway. Also, our Service Excellence Commission is going to be looking at all of the sort of countywide proposals that have come across their desk to look at, what are those things that we could implement that will be some salaries, excuse me, some budgetary savings? So they're going to try to prioritize that effort in their next round. And we are also asking some of the organizations where they have integrated services or they rely on each other, such as HSA, public health, mental health, probation, to get together as we talk about the budget going into the future. We want them together to be talking about service level impacts, because sometimes, you know, you push down over here, and you have this that pops up over there, and everybody needs to know about what the consequences are, or what they, so that there are fewer unintended consequences to the service delivery system. So those are the things that we have underway at this point in time, and that's it. End of my report.
Good. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a question, what do you see in the timeline between now and June as far as reports to the board? And do you have categories of presentations you're anticipating?
Right. Towards the end of April, we'll be back to your board with where our targets are, where our general budget is. I believe in May, we will start some of the presentations of the departmental presentations relative to the implications of those budget changes, and then our final budget hearing is in June. So we have work to do over the next few months.
Sue, pleasure, first.
I'd be interested in knowing what the implications are of the May election on what we're budgeting. If we've got some thoughts on that, it'd be nice to know.
Good. We can bring that back to you. Great.
A question before the election, you want to know what the implications are?
Well, I mean, we certainly need to be aware of what can happen based on the election results before.
Okay. All righty. We have motion to receive and file that oral presentation?
Seven.
And we're ready to vote on that. We're going into closed session, we'll be back out for our 1:30 time certain, all right? Okay. Thank you.
And I need any more time? Set. Okay, the board is back in session for our 1:30 time certain item and our planning staff will be on to make their presentation here regarding the Cornerstone Church appeal.
Good afternoon Supervisor Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson, Mr. Claybaum, Mr. Quong, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Gonzalez. I think I covered everyone here. My name is Dan Clement, I'm representing the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting staff's recommendation on the Cornerstone Community Church appeal. Before I begin discussing the specifics of our recommended actions, I think it's important just to back up and just briefly discuss where we are at this point, mainly for people who have not been following the case very closely. I'm going to be very brief, of course. I just want to highlight some of the main elements and how we got to where we are today. As you're aware, the Cornerstone Community Church submitted an application for a conditional use permit which included three principal uses, one of which is a Bible college, second being a church, and the third being a nonprofit distribution center for an organization called the Children's Hunger Fund. Some of the statistics on the size of the facilities are presented in this slide. And originally, the Planning Director made a decision in regards to an equivalency determination that actually Cornerstone was originally arguing in regards to the Children's Hunger Fund facilities, and the Planning Director deferred the decision as to whether or not to accept the CUP application for the church and the Children's Hunger Fund facilities to the Planning Commission. Colleges and universities are allowed in the open space zone, so there is never a question as to whether or not we should accept for processing that portion of the application. But because the non-coastal zoning ordinance expressly prohibits churches and the types of children, types of facilities that the Children's Hunger Fund is proposing, the Planning Director deferred this decision to the Planning Commission as to whether or not to accept the application for those two components of their proposed project. The Planning Commission upheld the Planning Director's equivalency determination. Cornerstone did not appeal that decision, but the Planning Commission also denied for processing the CUP application in regards to the church and the Children's Hunger Fund facilities. That decision was appealed to your board. You heard testimony on December 9th, both from staff, Cornerstone, and members of the public on that issue, and as part of that hearing, you requested County Council retain special counsel to get advice on the implications of this project and whatever decision you make, not only in terms of this project, but also for the non-coastal zoning ordinance. So, at this point, there are two main components that we're considering, first being the church, second being the Children's Hunger Fund facilities, and whether or not we should accept their CUP application for processing. And we've worked really closely with County Council, and based upon the advice we've received in regards to the church, we are basically arguing that you should accept Cornerstone's RLOPA argument. They have pointed to comparative assembly uses that have been allowed in the open space zone, the most obvious being the Ronald Reagan Library, and they have presented a convincing argument in terms of the consistency of those other types of secular assembly uses which have been allowed in the open space zone as compared to the proposed church. And very important for the decision you're going to make today is the fact that the non-coastal zoning ordinance includes a provision, basically states if there's a federal or state law which preempts a land use regulation that is in the zoning ordinance, the federal state law trumps our ability to regulate our zoning ordinance. So, based upon these two facts, we are recommending that you grant Cornerstone's appeal in part, you overturn the Planning Commission's decision in part, and you accept for processing the CUP application, at least in regards to the church. However, we have come to a different conclusion in regards to the Children's Hunger Fund facilities. There is disagreement between staff and Cornerstone in terms of how the Children's Hunger Fund facilities are characterized. As you read in the staff report and the information provided by Cornerstone, Cornerstone characterizes the Children's Hunger Fund facilities primarily in terms of the assembly activities that would occur in a portion of the entire facilities that they're proposing. However, we disagree with this characterization mainly due to the fact that if you look at just the facts in terms of the amount of square footage that would be dedicated to the different types of uses within the Children's Hunger Fund facilities, as you can see on the slide, over two-thirds of the facilities are going to be used for the distribution warehousing activities that they're proposing, whereas only about a third of what they're proposing would be used directly for the learning center and administrative office facilities. For that reason, we look at this building and its principal use more as a warehousing, distribution sort of facility, and to a much lesser degree, the assembly type of use that they have characterized these facilities as. This is important because, as you learned from the hearing on December 9th, as well as all of the information we've provided in the staff report, that in order to make a convincing equal terms argument under RLOPA, Cornerstone needs to point to a secular use that is similarly situated to them in terms of what type of use they're proposing, and demonstrate that the secular uses have been favorably treated in comparison to what they're proposing. Now, we've reviewed the zoning ordinance, we've looked at the different types of facilities that have been permitted in the open space zone, and we have not found a type of warehousing facility similar to what they're proposing that has been permitted or could be permitted in the open space zone. The only types of facilities that are even similar in nature to what they're proposing would be principal structures related to agriculture. These are greenhouses, hot houses, and those sorts of facilities. However, as you read in the board's staff report, the open space zone has a number of purposes and objectives. It consists of everything from confining urban development to those areas that are designated as such, preservation of wildlife habitat, and also, most importantly for this case and the types of uses that have been allowed which are similar to what are being proposed, the open space zone expressly allows for and promotes agricultural uses and compatible uses in open space designated areas. Whereas the principal structures related to agriculture are definitely consistent with the agricultural types of purposes and objectives that are allowed in the open space zone, we don't see a warehousing facility that is unrelated to any of the purposes and objectives of the open space zone that have been allowed in those areas. Therefore, we believe that Cornerstone has not presented a convincing equal terms argument. They haven't pointed to a secular use that has been favorably treated in relation to what they're proposing. And unlike principal structures related to agriculture and other types of agricultural uses that are allowed in the open space zone, we don't believe the CHF facilities are appropriate or there has been a violation of RLOPA or the equal terms clause. So, just to summarize our recommended actions, once again, in regards to the church, we are recommending that you grant the appeal in part, you overturn the Planning Commission's decision in part, and you accept for processing the CUP application in regards to the church. In contrast, with the CHF facilities, we are recommending that you deny the appeal in part, you uphold the Planning Commission's decision in part, and you deny for processing the application for the CP for the CHF facilities, and then obviously we're recommending that you designate the Planning Director, Ms. Rodriguez, as the custodian of the record of proceedings. One other point I should make in regards to the church application, assuming that you do go with our recommendation and accept for processing the CUP application, they would then be subject to all of the normal processing requirements for a CUP application. They'd be subject to environmental review, then we'd go back to the Planning Commission for the decision at this public hearing. So, that basically concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Thank you very much. If there are no questions, we'll go on to the appeal representatives, and so Representatives of Cornerstone Church, we have Jack Rubens, Dave Phillips, and how many speakers do you have?
We have three speakers.
Three speakers. Traditionally, we allow 20 minutes. We traditionally break that down as 15 minutes at the beginning and five for a rebuttal at the end. Can you make it work in that time period?
Chairman Bennett, we will do our best. I have a feeling we won't quite because this will be our first and only opportunity to respond to the 10-page board memo that was released last Friday. We're not complaining that it was released last Friday, but this is our only opportunity, and it's quite involved, and so we might bleed over just a few minutes.
I appreciate your candor, and we won't ring the bell at 15 minutes. We'd like to have you make a cogent presentation of your point of view here.
I will do my best. Well, Mr. Chairman, it's too...
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Great. When I say cogent, I mean make sure you take enough time to be able to get it all said the way you want to get it said.
Thank you. It would be helpful not to have to rush because it's kind of important.
Thank you.
Chairman Supervisors, I'm Jack Rubens. I'm a land use attorney, and I represent Cornerstone Community Church in connection with the matter before you today. Let me make sure I've got the right presentation. Okay. I want to say at the outset, we do very much appreciate the fact that staff has concurred with our conclusions regarding the church. We don't take that lightly, we understand that that is an important step for them to have taken, and we very much appreciate it. We do however vigorously disagree with the staff recommendation regarding the CHF facilities for reasons that I will explain in some detail. It's unfortunate that we've come here today where we didn't have a full chance to really resolve the issues because, as I will explain, there's really some very fundamental misunderstandings as to how RLOPA works that has led to the board letters that you received. But let me also back up as Mr. Clement did, and just briefly remind you of a few facts that you kind of need to know for this discussion to really make any sense. And I'm going to skip by some of the things that Dan already showed you. He talked about the project. I would note that he had a graphic that said 194,000 square feet for a church and athletic fields and a water treatment plant. That essentially is open space, there is no amphitheater structure, athletic fields are obviously open space, so the improvements are actually limited to the 92,000 square feet for the church and the college and the 91,700 for the CHF facilities. And you know where the project is, and you might recall that 60% of the project would be permanently dedicated to open space. The CHF structures you can see are in the upper right-hand corner. The one in the upper left is the, I think I can actually use this, that's the Training and Learning Center, which we'll have a fair amount to talk about, and then these two facilities are the structures, the storage facilities. It is true that if you simply look at this in terms of square footage, yes, the two storage facilities make up about two-thirds of the overall square footage, but as we will explain, it is really the Training and Learning Center that is the critical component of this project, even though that's largely irrelevant to your determination today. And in fact, the number of employees is 17 in the Training and Learning Center and only four in the warehouse facilities. We submitted a letter to you that hopefully you've had a chance to read. We submitted two letters, actually. The first is from Rick Parkinson, and it talks about CHF in terms of its religious mission, and the board letters really don't take issue with the fact that the CHF is a religious-based organization and that these facilities do directly relate to their religious mission. So I don't think there's a dispute about that by any means, but just to remind you, CHF is a faith-based religious nonprofit, and their religious purpose stated in their various papers is to eliminate the suffering of children by equipping God's church to communicate the gospel through effective compassion ministry. And essentially what they do, and Dave Phillips after me, who is the head of CHF, will talk about this much more cogently than I can, but essentially, CHF strives to fulfill the physical needs of children as the central means of helping them with their spiritual needs. The ultimate focus of CHF is on the spiritual condition of people they help, the children and their families. And as I say near the bottom, well, in the middle, CHF is fundamentally different than a normal charitable organization, a point we've emphasized before, they do more than just provide food. That is a means to fulfill their central religious mission. And the hub of the CHF facilities is the Training and Learning Center, where members and volunteers receive training, to a minor extent, on how to distribute food, but for the most part, it relates to their compassion ministry mission and enhancing the spiritual condition of the individuals they help. The storage facilities for donated items directly support the fulfillment of that mission, I don't think there's any dispute about that, that all three of these structures help fulfill the mission and are critical to fulfilling that mission. So the remaining issue we have, assuming that you concur with the recommendation regarding the church, and I'm not speaking to the church because I guess our assumption is you will concur, if you have questions about the church, we'd be happy to answer those questions too, but we're going to focus on CHF. So the issue is, is the county required to process the CUP application for the CHF facilities pursuant to the equal terms provision, as well as other provisions of RLOPA? We're only going to discuss the equal terms provision today, but we have submitted a letter to you last November that talks about all the other reasons under RLOPA and under constitutional law that apply with equal force here, that are reasons why the CHF facilities do qualify as a conditionally permitted use. But we hope you'll be persuaded on the equal terms provision. Understanding RLOPA. No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that treats a religious assembly or institution on less than equal terms with a nonreligious assembly or institution. The leading case in this area is the Lighthouse case. This is a case that Mr. Quong quoted from liberally with approval at the Planning Commission meeting, so we understand that the county council concurs that this is an important case, and we believe it's the leading case actually in this area, and it came out at the end of 2007. What they said was, in looking at the equal terms provision, the focus is not on the equivalency of the use, it is on the equivalency of the impact to the municipality's objectives, their zoning objectives. And it reads, "If a land use regulation treats religious assemblies or institutions on less than equal terms with nonreligious assemblies or institutions that are no less harmful to the governmental objectives in enacting the regulation, that regulation fails." So the focus is on, do the nonreligious uses, whether they are similar or not, to the nonreligious uses, to the religious use, are they equally or more impactful to whatever the objectives are that you're dealing with? And as I'll explain, the board memo kind of flip-flops. In one argument, that central part of the test is ignored, and in another argument, that language is adhered to very strictly, in fact, in an overly restrictive way, and I'll come to that in a moment. The equal term standard does not relate, in other words, to similarity between religious and nonreligious uses, but similarity as to the impact that religious and nonreligious uses would have on the government objectives. That is what the Lighthouse case says, and that, we believe, is the standard that applies here. So the issue is whether, and it's cutting off again, the issue is whether the zoning ordinance treats the proposed CHF facilities on less than equal terms with nonreligious uses that are conditionally permitted in the zoning ordinance, and here's the key, and are similar to the project in terms of their effects on the county's open space objectives. That's the test specifically here, and I'll be coming back to that. In the past, we focused on a few of the uses that are conditionally permitted in the open space zone. We focused on the first four on the left-hand column, colleges and universities, government buildings, correctional institutions, camps and retreats. There are actually many more that other conditionally permitted uses that could have equal or greater impacts on open space objectives in the county. Fire stations, law enforcement facilities, golf courses, cemeteries, agricultural packing and storage facilities that can exceed 100,000 square feet, all with a CUP. All of those uses, if you open your zoning code to the open space zone uses, are permitted with a conditional use permit. Here is the county's open space objective, which is actually quoted in the second board memo that you received. The objectives of the open space zone include the conservation of renewable and nonrenewable natural resources, a term I'll be coming back to, the preservation and enhancement of environmental quality, and the retention of the maximum number of future land use options while allowing reasonable and compatible uses on open lands. That's your zoning objective, so in applying the equal term standard, that's the zoning objective that needs to be considered in looking at the impact that different nonreligious and religious uses have on that objective, or on those objectives. It's cut off at the top. What it says is, is that the CHF facilities are conditionally permitted uses under RLOPA. Here's our argument in a nutshell. The development of conditionally permitted uses in the open space zone, which include colleges, government buildings, correctional institutions, all those other facilities that I listed a moment ago, they're no less harmful to the county's open space objectives than the development of the proposed CHF facilities. Jails, the Reagan Library, 100,000 square foot agricultural storage facilities, in terms of the county's open space objectives, all of those uses can and have had a much greater impact than the CHF facilities would on the conservation of renewable and nonrenewable natural resources and preserving environmental quality. These are very modest structures that have been proposed for the CHF facilities, far less so than any number of uses that you conditionally permit. And if you're looking at the impact on the open space zoning objectives, there is simply no doubt that any one of those uses that were listed on that prior slide could equally or greater impact, and have equally or greater impacted, those open space objectives. Now, the types of uses that would occur, and I skipped one actually, I'm sorry, let me go back. So in the third bullet point, the nonreligious packing and storage facilities, conditionally permitted in the open space zone, just looking at those, can and do utilize more open space and more significantly impact open space than the low-intensity storage facilities that have been proposed here, and I'll give you a couple of examples of that in a minute. One of the most striking aspects of the two board letters you received is a virtual ignoring of the Training and Learning Center, which is actually the most critical aspect of the three facilities by far, as Mr. Phillips will talk about. But even if you looked at the equal term standard the way the staff did, and the way, by the way, that they differ is they say, no, on the one hand, they argue, no, we only look at agricultural storage facilities in making this comparison because our test is limited to looking at religious assemblies that are similar. So you can see in saying that, they ignored the whole part of the standard about looking at the impacts on open space objectives, because if you just look at the Training and Learning Center, for example, it includes classes, training, administration, social gatherings, and storage in the other facilities. There are many, many conditionally permitted uses that were on that list I showed you that include all of those things. Colleges and universities include all those things, including storage. The Reagan Library is a storage facility for 50 million artifacts. It includes the Air Force One Pavilion, which is really a storage facility for a very large airplane and a warehouse structure. Prisons are a form of storage facility for individuals who have been convicted of crimes. And obviously, the agricultural buildings themselves, they all are devoted to storage. But all of those things are similar in nature to the types of secular uses that regularly occur at all those uses that are conditionally permitted. So we believe that under a straightforward reading of the test and looking at your zoning objectives, that the CHF facilities must be considered conditionally permitted uses. It's pretty much that. It's pretty much that simple, and the reasoning really isn't any different than the analysis with respect to the church facilities. And here's some of the examples we gave you, and I want to stress at the outset, and I said this last time too, but it's clear from the board memo that there's still confusion on this point. The fact that the Reagan Library has been built, and it's an enormous facility with more than 450,000 people a year that come to it, and the fact that the Todd Road Jail is a huge facility that will ultimately total about 850,000 square feet, the fact that you've built Thomas Aquinas College to be built with all of its structures and its recent very significant church bell tower over the last two years, and the fact that you permit, you know, have allowed the development of enormous storage facilities like that one and this one and this one, is actually in a way irrelevant, because when you do an equal terms analysis, you're looking at the zoning code, not what's on the ground. If conditionally permitted uses include things like this, whether they've been built or not, whether they've been approved or not, if they are conditionally permitted, then you also have to conditionally permit a religious use that has the same impacts. And that's not to say you have to approve those uses. The whole issue we're here today about is simply whether you have to process the application. In any event, if you grant the appeal in full today, which you should, you still have every opportunity to review and consider whether you want to eventually approve the conditional use permit. So that's a completely separate issue. But the fact that these kinds of facilities can be built is the point we're getting at, and that they greatly exceed the very low-intensity CHF uses. So, having said that, the board submitted two, the staff submitted two letters to you. Essentially, in the second letter, they abandoned much of what they said in the first letter, so I'm going to focus more on what the second letter says, maybe one exception. First, I want to clarify on the sequence of events. Actually, I think this was inadvertent, but it was significantly misstated in the second board memo. The second board memo would lead you to believe, as it's written, that Cornerstone did not raise this issue of the application of the equal terms standard and other Ralupa standards until after the Planning Commission denied an equivalency determination. That is untrue. At the same time that Cornerstone made the argument about equivalency, it also, and primarily, I should add, made the arguments concerning the application of the Ralupa, the application of Ralupa to both the church and the CHF facilities. And for some reason, it continually got lost during the process until a relatively short time ago that we made that argument, but indeed, we made it, and we made it very strongly. So from the outset, this has been an issue. This wasn't something that Cornerstone came up with after the equivalency determination was made.
I just want to point out, the red light's gone off. You can ignore that and go on.
I appreciate it. I'm moving as quickly as I can. As I said earlier, on the second bullet point, it's really striking in both board letters how the Training and Learning Center is ignored, and in the first letter, it simply ignored altogether. In the second letter, it says kind of what Mr. Clement mentioned. He said that there's a disagreement about the characterization of what the primary use is, that we think it's the Training and Learning Center, and the county staff feels that it's the storage facilities because they have greater square footage. The first point to make is that's irrelevant. It doesn't matter which use is primary or which use is secondary. All the uses have to be considered. In other words, if we'd have submitted an application just for the Training and Learning Center, you'd have to directly consider the Training and Learning Center. You can't ignore the Training and Learning Center because there are other facilities that have been proposed. So there's this big, giant gap in both of the board letters where the most critical component of the CHF facilities are ignored, and for the reasons we've already stated, since those facilities are very modest in nature and they have far less impact than any of the other conditionally permitted uses that I've mentioned, for that reason alone, the equal terms standard is complied with. But in addition, you know, even if you assume the test is what Mr. Clement said, that it's looking at the similarity of the religious assembly, in that case, it is similar for obvious reasons. As I said, the education, the training, the social activities, the administration, all of that is, of course, consistent with many of the conditionally permitted uses. So first point to make is, please don't lose sight of the Training and Learning Center. It can't simply be ignored, especially when it is indeed the most critical part of the overall facility. Second, the board letters disregard the actual equal terms standard. What the board letter says, the second one anyway, in more detail, is that it's okay to ignore the fact, when you're looking at the CHF facilities, you can ignore the colleges and universities, you can ignore the government buildings, you can ignore the correctional institutions, you could ignore everything in there but the one conditionally permitted use for agricultural storage facilities. And the reason you can do that, the staff has argued, is because that's the only secular use that is similar to the storage facilities. Obviously, this breaks down completely for the Training and Learning Center. And as I've already said, the reason that's so fundamentally incorrect is because the test does not relate to equivalency of use. The test relates to the similarity of the impact on your open space objectives. That's the test. That was a quote that I showed you. But that is completely ignored as a way to narrow it down to a single use, the agricultural storage facility. So the focus is narrowed right off the bat in a way where it just disregards the fundamental test. That's the next point. If you get past that, and you just look at the argument that was made and forget the fact that you can't just limit it to looking at the agricultural storage facilities, the argument that the staff makes breaks down for a couple of other very significant reasons. First of all, what they say at the outset is that, they go back to the zoning, well, how did it go back all the way to the beginning? I knew I was going to have a problem with this. Is there any reason why it doesn't work now? It's just stuck?
Our clerk will give you some assistance.
I'm sorry. Do you have to start it again? Ah, thank you. Sorry about that. I'm technologically challenged. When you go back and you look at the zoning objective, what they tried, you'll see there's nothing in there about agricultural land. The difficulty that the staff faced in making this argument is that they had to show that there was a zoning objective that related to agricultural land. And by the way, when I talked about the flip-flop earlier, here's the flip-flop. In looking at the agricultural storage facility, if they applied the same test they first said was the test, if they simply looked at religious assemblies and nonreligious assemblies, and is there a nonreligious assembly that's conditionally permitted that's similar to the CHF storage facilities, well, agricultural storage facilities are certainly equivalent. They're storage facilities. So why all of a sudden is that not the test? It's because the board memo flip-flopped, and then they switched back to the regular standard at that point. Once they eliminated everything except the storage facility, then they flipped to the argument about the zoning objectives. Whereas if they followed the argument about the equal terms standard being based on zoning objectives, there would have been no ability in the first place to eliminate all of those other uses that have great impact on open space. So now they flip-flopped, and now just with respect to agricultural storage, the board memo says, well, now the important thing is, what's the impact on zoning objective? So if you ignore everything else that's problematic about this, they had a further problem because there's nothing in the zoning objectives about agricultural land. So what they did was seized upon the term "natural resources," and they said "natural resources" includes agricultural land. Well, no, it doesn't. It doesn't remotely include agricultural land. Natural resources are resources that are in their natural state. Water, air, forests, mineral resources, those are natural resources. They are in their natural state. Agricultural land is not in its natural state. Agricultural land is by its nature altered land. So we don't think there's anything in this zoning objective that relates to agricultural land. And furthermore, even if you could construe natural resources to include agricultural land, the analysis still doesn't make any sense, because think about it. If you conditionally permitted 100,000-square-foot storage facility, which you can do, you can approve a greater than 100,000-square-foot storage facility, the construction of that storage facility would consume natural resources, it would consume land, it would track from recreational opportunities, it would have environmental impacts, and to a far greater degree than the minimal facilities that have been proposed here. So even if you disregard the four other ways that this analysis truly, truly does not make any sense whatsoever, and you look at this actual argument they've made, it still doesn't hold up by any stretch of the imagination. That's our response to the board letters. And then finally, to go to the last slide. We've had a sense in talking about this with staff that the concern may be about precedent, at least with respect to the storage facilities, and we thought it's important to point out that, one, really, the precedent, if there is one, has already been set. The precedent was set by the uses that are conditionally permitted in your zoning code. That's the universe in which we're operating right now, and that's the basis on which the equal terms analysis has to occur. But beside that, you really aren't setting a precedent, because first of all, for many reasons. First, Ralupa only applies when you're dealing with religious uses. So you're already dealing with a very narrow subset of the kinds of applications that might be made to you. And second, very few religious organizations need these types of facilities as a central means of fulfilling their mission. This is very unusual, admittedly so. This will not generally be the case. Third, they're modest in size, as I've talked about. And fourth, and this may be the most important point of all, this stack of papers right here is our revised application, and then the supplemental materials to that application that have been prepared over the last year and a half. There are very few organizations, religious or otherwise, but particularly religious organizations, that are going to have the wherewithal to even be in a position to be talking to you today, you know, due to the cost of acquiring land and your very rigorous application requirements. Thus far, Cornerstone has spent millions of dollars to acquire this property, and they have spent a significant amount of money in excess of that to prepare all of this documentation for you, and they've made three submittals so far. And the problem we face is ironically that if you concur even with the staff's recommendation, you will be processing the application with respect to the great majority of the proposed uses. But the problem for us is that that means that if you did not concur on the CHF facilities, a good portion of all this documentation would have to be, well, it might have to be completely redone to eliminate the CHF facilities. So this is our request, in a nutshell. One, we hope you're persuaded, based on everything we've said and all the prior materials that we've provided to you, that there is simply no doubt whatsoever that not only the church, the church facilities are conditionally permitted, but also the CHF facilities are. If for any reason, and I hope there is no reason, but if for any reason you remain, you're not fully persuaded, or if you have lingering doubts regarding the CHF facilities, we would ask this of you. Instruct the staff to process the application with respect to all of the uses, for now, while we continue to work on a way to more fully persuade you that the CHF facilities are indeed conditionally permitted. There's no downside to the county in doing this, because the next step would be, once the application is completed, is to prepare an environmental impact report. And all this would mean, if you concurred with this notion, is that the environmental impact report would indicate a somewhat greater impact than if the CHF facilities weren't there. And at such point, is there's a kind of a final meeting of the minds, one way or the other, as to whether the CHF facilities should be part of the application or not, or if there's another way, another application that can be made, then we can either go forward having an EIR for the whole project, or the CHF facilities can just be eliminated. I hate to have even said all of that, because we feel so very strongly that CHF facilities are conditionally permitted, so we hope that will be your decision today. Sorry to talk so fast and to take so long. Happy to answer any questions, or you might want to hear from the other two speakers first, whatever your choice.
Thank you. Board members, hear from the other speakers? All right. You've used 25 minutes at this point in time, so you have two more speakers still?
They'll be relatively brief.
And you are Jack Rubens?
Yes, I'm Jack Rubens.
Great. And then is it Dave Phelps and Francis Chan are the other two speakers?
The next speaker is Dave Phillips, who is the founder and the head of the Children's Hunger Fund, and the last speaker, Francis Chan, is the pastor for the...
I just want to confirm our list that we have here. Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
My name is Dave Phillips. I'm the president and founder of Children's Hunger Fund. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I will be very brief. I just really have two points to make. The first one is, I want to make sure that everyone on the board understands the religious nature of Children's Hunger Fund. We are chartered, registered with the state of California as a religious entity, and that is central to our mission, and that is primary, I think, to our discussion. One of the concerns that I have is that, as I've reviewed the board letters, is that the Planning Commission seems to not fully understand the religious nature of what we do, and continues to categorize us primarily as a food handling or a food storage warehouse facility. And that is really not who we are. They also seem to discount the learning and educational component of what we do, as well as the volunteer component. And at our core of our mission, we exist really solely to serve the local church, here and around the world. And what we do is we equip and train pastors and Christian leaders in the biblical mandate to care for the poor. And we essentially offer theology-level classes on the biblical view of compassion, and we really believe that the proper response to poverty and to the poor biblically is that we need to respond with a heart of compassion. And that's what we're doing, is training pastors and churches to care for the poor, using relational strategies, strategies focusing on home delivery of food, to minister into the lives of poor families. That's what we do. I think the other component that is missed is that we want to have that same impact on our community, and that's where our volunteer component comes in. We want to have hundreds and thousands of youth and adults come to the facility through this learning and educational center with the same motivation of educating them on the proper biblical response to the poor, which focuses on compassion and service. That is the biblical response. The Learning Center provides the vehicle for us to do that. The warehouse facility, as it's been labeled, also provides the opportunity for us to do that. That's where the volunteers, once they have been exposed to the biblical view of compassion and service, will go to undertake their service projects, which may be packing food, it may be sorting clothing, may be doing a variety of things, all used to serve the church that will ultimately serve the poor. So I want to make sure that the board understands that. I think to categorize CHF, primary purpose for existence as a storage facility is inaccurate. I would liken that to maybe stating that the Reagan Library, primary purpose for existence is to store an aging aircraft. That isn't why they exist. So I would just encourage you and appeal to you, as you make your decision, to keep in mind the religious nature of our organization, as well as the rights afforded to us via Ralupa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Our next speaker is Mr. Chan.
I just want to speak on behalf of the Board of Elders at Cornerstone. We're just tired of this. I'm sure you are too. I can't believe you guys do this all day. I just want to speak to the thought, it's interesting that he brought up, very few religious organizations request these types of facilities to carry out their religious mission, and that is a very true statement, and to me, it's a very sad, very, very sad statement, because to me, that's how we're supposed to show Jesus Christ to the world, you know, who sacrificed everything for us. We sacrifice for the poor, and just explaining that why our mission is so tied to Children's Hunger Fund. Matthew 25 talks about the judgment, you know, based upon our belief, and I know this isn't really Bible study time, but, you know, it talks about the day when Jesus Christ returns with 100 million angels with him, and it says, that he says to those on his left, "Depart from me, you curs it, into the eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was hungry and you gave me no food; I was thirsty and you gave me no drink; I was a stranger and you didn't welcome me; I was naked and you did not clothe me; sick and in prison and you didn't visit me." Then they'll say, they'll answer, saying, "Lord, when did we see you, hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or naked, or sick, or in prison, and did not minister to you?" And he'll answer them, saying, "As you did not do it to one of the least of these, you did not do it to me, and these will go away into eternal punishment, but the righteous into eternal life." So our belief at Cornerstone is like, this has got to be the central part of religion to us, is caring for those who are in need. This is what we're judged for, and that's why we spend the time on this, and so it's not another area of our church. To me, it's foundational. It's what I'm judged upon at the end. Jesus is going to say, "Why didn't you care for those people?" And I believe churches are too much about, hey, let's get together and study this book and sing songs, when really, we're supposed to be looking for the needs around the world and giving all of our resources and concern, you know, and attention to that. And that's why we've got 75 people and, you know, sign up for the foster parenting class right now. And that's why some of this bothers us, is because not only do we not want to spend the money on, you know, creating this stuff and paying for him, but we also don't want the county spending money, you know, for your legal counsel. Now, something the elders deliberated on last week, just going, gosh, we don't, not only do we not feel good about spending this money, we don't want the county spending the money. We just want to move forward on this, make sure you understand our heart in this, and why CHF and Cornerstone are... why CHF and Cornerstone are so tied together. It is, in the end, we're hoping that you would say, you know what, we want our county to be about these things. We want to be about caring for these people. Last thing I'll say is, Dave, you know, last, two Tuesdays ago, just came back from Cambodia and was telling us about these kids that were just rescued out of a brothel, and talked to us about, talking to a 10-year-old girl who'd been stuck in this brothel for two years. And every one of us, here's a room full of full-grown men, you know, thinking about these 50, 60 girls, young girls, that could have been our daughters, and we're bawling our eyes out. We're trying to pray, we can't even pray, we can't even think, like, this is all, you know, I don't go, well, at least my girls are safe. I look at these kids and go, man, that's my girl. And I know it's on the other end of the world, but that's a lot of what CHF is about, is we want to bring an understanding to our county that there's a big world out there with tremendous needs, and we've got to stop just looking at our nice little house and our nice little protected families and go, man, I'm crazy about that girl, I don't even know, but get her out of there, get her some food, get her some clothes. And so it's not just another component of the church. To me, and according to scripture, that's true religion. True religion isn't filling a church with a bunch of people to sing songs. To me, the most practical way to show my love to Jesus Christ is to go and feed him when he's hungry, rescue him out of the brothel when he's being abused. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chan. Our next speaker is Jean Notdonahue. Bert, I have no other speakers after this, is that right?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. You all know your names, so I won't have to repeat those. That was very educational. Thank you. And I think I learned that when I was very, very young. It was simple, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you." And I hope everyone else remembers those words. At any rate, I'm not a lawyer, but I have as many words, I assure you, as the lawyer does, being a minson, and passionately interested in this project, and passionately interested in our area. So, I'll just read this. "Please let me strongly voice my opinion against the proposed church project being allowed to build in the Sores area. This so very, very valuable space was voted by the people to remain open, and the church or any other entity should not be given approval for a project, any project, especially for such an enormous project. I don't think the parking spots have even been shown on this map. What a precedent would be set." Yes, a precedent, I know what a precedent is, and so do all of you. "To name only a few of the serious objections. Open land is at a premium, water is being cut back on agriculture, a serious drain on our limited energy resources, dramatically increased traffic and pollution. Did anyone ask the wildlife about this? But the most important item to keep in mind is, the people have already spoken, and I urge you to listen to those voices. You five people are the keeper of the gate, and your decision will affect an unaccountable number of people and for generations to come. Our valley is a special place, please help it keep us that way. All the people in churches in the world, and there's certainly a lot of other churches in the Simi Valley area and in this area, that are not spending money like this, that would feed a lot of people, and building multimillion-dollar projects. But you are the keeper of the gate, and you will affect a lot of people. Our valley is a very special place, please help us keep us that way. All the people in churches in the world cannot quell the problems therein, but we can try to make our small world the best we can." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Miss Donahue. That ends our public testimony. And is there anybody else out in the public who wishes to speak at this point in time? I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board for discussion. I think the first thing I'd like to do is ask County Council a question. And my question for County Council is, if the board did not accept the staff's recommendation and instead denied the appeal, what would be the likely result?
Well, if the applicant elected to sue, likely they would sue in United States District Court. We think there is a reasonable likelihood that a court would find that Arlopa preempts the zoning ordinance with respect to the church portion of the application. We disagree with counsel for Cornerstone and CHF. We think the court would likely find in favor of the county with respect to CHF.
Okay. Does staff have any responses that they want to make in terms of the comments made by applicant, or anybody from County Council, or planning staff?
No, not unless you have a specific question of us.
All right. I'm going to ask you to repeat your answer one more time, just to end it here before we vote. Mr. Claybaum?
Sure. If the applicant chose to sue, it would almost certainly be in federal court, and we think it likely that a federal court would rule in favor of the church and determine that Arlopa preempts the county's zoning ordinance with respect to the church portion of the application. We think the outcome on the CHF portion of the application would likely be in favor of the county, that is, that CHF would not be entitled to proceed through the CUP application process.
And did planning staff work closely with County Council as they were developing their position here?
Absolutely. County staff and planning staff worked hand-in-hand.
Thank you very much. All right. Supervisor Foy.
I do want to ask a couple of questions here that just came up a little differently as I saw something up here. We had, they talked about, the attorney talked about the ag storage facilities, I guess, called them the same thing. You know, I guess, ag storage facilities. And I guess that, I'm trying to understand, the difference though, is in the ag storage, maybe you can answer this, is that's an ag versus open space? Is that the difference, or what?
Supervisor Chair, Supervisor Foy, you've got to kind of back up when you're considering this question. First off, what kind of has gotten lost in all this discussion is, what is the purpose, what are the purposes and objectives of the open space zone? And as stated in the board letter and in previous board letters, there are a number of purposes and objectives of the open space zone. Most of the time, people think first and foremost of wildlife habitat conservation, confining urban sprawl. Those are purposes and objectives of the open space zone, but there's also another expressed purpose of the open space zone that comes from state law and is reinforced by our general plan and is reflected in the zoning ordinance, and that is the allowance of agricultural development and compatible uses on open space lands. One type of resource is agricultural soils and forest lands and grazing lands, those sorts of agricultural types of activities. So, when looking at the uses that are allowed, the main reason we're focusing on the ag principal structures is because if you look at all of the different types of uses that are similar to what we believe the Children's Hunger Fund facilities are most similar to, the only use that we found were these principal structures related to ag. And because agriculture is a stated objective of the open space land use and zoning designations, we feel that the allowance of principal structures for agricultural uses is totally consistent with the agricultural purpose and objective of the open space zone.
Okay. So is it ag use in open space, not ag use in ag zones?
Precisely.
Okay. And so, in the ag, the difference then in these ag uses, I guess I'm trying to figure out, I'm just trying to understand that they're trying to make a comparison, and we're trying to say the comparison doesn't quite work, right?
Yeah. Once again, as Mr. Rubens pointed out in detail, what we're looking at is whether or not these uses, how they weigh out in terms of their consistency with the purposes and objectives of the open space zone. So, clearly, principal structures related to agriculture, they're consistent with the agricultural purpose of the open space zone. However, we don't feel that the types of warehousing and distribution facilities that the Children's Hunger Fund is proposing is consistent with any of the purposes and objectives of the open space zone. So, that's where the comparison comes into play. And we feel that, once again, principal structures related to ag, they're consistent with open space purposes and objectives. However, we don't feel the CHF facilities are consistent with those objectives, so they have no comparative to point to.
Okay. It's not basically what they do in those different facilities, you're just talking about a comparative point, is that right? I mean, because what would you say most of the ag facilities do, their warehouse?
Well, principal structures related to agriculture consist of greenhouses, hot houses, and packaging, distribution of agricultural resources that are grown either onsite or offsite, and they're brought there and they're packaged to be distributed to the market or wherever to be sold. Whereas that is all facilitating crop production and agriculturally used in the open space zone, we don't see a similar type of objective of the open space zone that is achieved by the Children's Hunger Fund facilities. So, that's the main distinction.
You have a comment on that?
Well, I think one question that you were thinking about was with respect to the photographs that Mr. Rubens displayed of agricultural uses. My understanding is those are not photographs of uses in the open space zone, and perhaps that's one of the questions you wanted answered.
Yes, I'm trying to get the difference between open space and the ag zone, because I know in those areas...
Yeah. Well, the purpose of, you are correct, Mr. Claybaum, those photos are of developments that has occurred in agriculturally designated lands. Agricultural designated lands were designed for intensive agricultural uses, and the general plan acknowledges that agriculture is a very important industry in the county, and they want to carve out those areas which are most appropriate for this very intensive type of agricultural use. And you saw photos of that type of development. Yeah, that is distinct from the open space zone in the sense that, as I said earlier, the open space zone is designed not only to achieve agricultural purposes and objectives, but also all of these other types of objectives as well. So, you can have intensive sorts of agricultural uses in the open space zone because they're consistent with the agricultural objective of the open space zone. But that's not to say it's identical to what is allowed in the agriculturally designated areas. For example, in agricultural land use and zoning designated areas, that's a mouthful, there are differences in terms of the minimum lot sizes that are allowed. You must have a larger lot in the agricultural area because, once again, it's designed to allow for very intense types of agricultural farming. The open space zone, you can have a smaller lot, you can go down to 10 acres. And also, if you look at the zoning ordinance, there's a big distinction between the agricultural zone and the open space zone in terms of what is not allowed in the agricultural zone, but what is allowed in the open space zone, because agriculture, agriculturally designated areas have a single purpose, it's ag. Whereas open space, you have a number of different types of uses and objectives, so you see different types of uses being allowed there.
Okay. All right. Let me just ask you one more thing. You had said in regards to any ag or what they use in those warehouses is to bring stuff in, pack it, and distribute it, or do whatever, right? How is that any different than what we just heard from the Children's Hunger Fund and what they were doing? I'm trying to get this understanding of what the difference is here.
Once again, the difference is, what are the expressed purposes and objectives of these lands? And then, what sort of uses do you allow based upon those purposes and objectives? So, we don't see, for example, industrial uses as one of the stated purposes and objectives of the open space zone. If we did, then we would see, we would be much more amenable to allowing the types of facilities that they're proposing. However, because those sorts of facilities, that is agriculturally related packaging, distribution sort of facilities, are there only for agriculture, we feel it's totally consistent, once again, with that particular purpose of the open space designated areas.
So you're calling what they do industrial, is what you're trying to say?
Yes.
In terms of industrial versus... Okay. All right. Anybody else have another question? If they have.
Are we ready for... You done? Supervisor?
Yes. As I'm sure those here have listened, this is tough. And we have asked and taken the time, I think, to have a good review by planning and review by legal counsel. I think this is one of those Solomon decisions. And so I'm going to put a motion forward that's going to accept the staff's recommended actions.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to accept staff's recommended actions. Do we have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Vote passes three to two. All right. And with that, we stand adjourned, is that right, Bill? We stand adjourned.